Well, good afternoon. My name is Ethan Collier and I'll be chairing today's meeting in the Chattanooga Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission. Welcome to our meeting. Wanted to go over a couple of quick things before we get started. Planning Commissions received this packet in the mail a little over a week ago and our members have had an opportunity to review it in advance of today's meeting. So at times we do move quickly. So make sure that you've got a copy of the agenda there in front of you and you can follow along closely so that you don't miss anything. In each case, what I'll do is I'll read off the case number and the address of where the where the case is. And I will ask if the applicant's present. If you're here, please raise your hand and acknowledge you're you're here. And then in a lot of cases, there's opposition or there's neighbors with concerns or questions about the development. And if you're one of those people, I will ask if there's any opposition present. And at that time, if you're here and you're not the applicant and you wish to speak in regards to the case, or you've got some sort of question or concern or opposition, make sure you raise your hand so that I can see you're here and we will slow down the meeting at that point and make sure that we have the opportunity to hear from the applicant and the opposition. But I won't know that unless you raise your hand. So make sure if I ask if there's any opposition, you raise your hand. What we'll do is in those cases, we'll hear the staff presentation so that everybody here can see the same thing that Planning Commission's got and had the opportunity to look at. Then we'll have the applicant come up to the mic. Make sure when you come up to the microphone here that you state your name and address for the record and the reason for the request and any other information you feel like Planning Commission needs to know. The applicant will have seven minutes to present their case. And then we'll have an opportunity to hear from the opposition. If you're here and you're in opposition and you want to speak, make sure that you get out of your chair and line up over here on the right side of the room behind the podium so that I can see that there are a number of people that want to speak because the total time allotted to opposition is only nine minutes. And from time to time, I have to interrupt people so that everybody can have an opportunity to speak. I will say that if you're speaking in opposition to the case, a lot of times people will come with notes prepared in advance, which is really helpful. But the first person up to the microphone will tell us something. And then the second person will get up and say the exact same thing. And the third person will get up and say the exact same thing. And and then we'll run out of time. So I would just encourage you to, as you're standing there, listen to the other opposition that's that's been stated. And if if there's something that's been said, it's not necessarily most helpful to the Planning Commission to hear it over and over again. So you might modify your your comments according to what what it is we're all hearing. After the opposition speaks, they'll all sit down and the applicant will come back up to the mic and have two minutes to respond to any of the comments that we've heard from opposition. All the conversation that takes place today will be between the person at the podium and the Planning Commission. So if you have a question, please direct that question to the Planning Commission, not to staff. And if you have any comments, which obviously there will be plenty, make sure to make those comments to the Planning Commission, not staff or the folks that are here. With that, is there any are there any changes to our agenda today?
There is one under Old Business. They actually have withdrawn the case 2025-154 for 3917 Blanchard Street. We did not hear that last month. The applicant had a deferral, but now they need to withdraw this request. And we've accepted that request.
Brian, that case number one more time?
Sorry. It's the number two under Old Business is 2025-0154.
Yes, please. Mr. Anderson?
So we don't need to take a vote on that? It's in the agenda that it's withdrawn, but we need to take?
We consider it was deferred last month. I think you should take action to officially accept the withdrawal.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anything else?
No. That's the only change I'm aware of.
All right. Well, we'll go ahead and get started. First item under Old Business is HCSD-25-41. And this is a preliminary plat for Windy Ridge subdivision Phase One, lots one through 39. Staff is recommended to deny the applicant's request. Mr. Price?
Yes, sir. We would like to ask for a 60-day deferral on this case and the one following HSDB-25-7.
So we have a in regards to case H- HCSD-25-41 and HSDB-25-7, we have a motion to defer for 60 days. Did I hear a second? Okay. Yes.
I'm just curious, Mike, why is 60? Because we talked about three months to work out the details of a possible special tax district at County Commission. So why wouldn't we do 90?
Because we can always come back and extend that from here, but we need to see what takes place in the next two months. We don't want to sort of wait till the last moment. So this just ensures everything is moving in a good direction and then we can defer if we need to at that point.
I think we can only defer 60.
Well, there is. You can do it as long as you want to, basically. Also, withdraw the application, come back when it's ready. But there's a thing in state law, typically the Plan Commission has to act within 60 days or esteemed approved. We did act in September to defer it to this meeting today. Also in state law, it says at the applicant's request, he can ask for an extension and if the if the commission approves.
All right. Dr. Highlander seconded it, so I'll defer to his thoughts on this.
I will say, our financial director did say he would need six months. So if you think there's value, Mr. Price, in 60 days as opposed to six months, I did.
All right, we have a motion and it has been seconded to defer. Is there any other discussion?
And Mr. Chairman, we did receive lots of emails in opposition to this case and we just received one. We just reminded a few minutes ago. Native American Society sent some stuff in too about this property and maybe maybe having some native artifacts on the site. So they're opposed to it as well.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Price.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is case HCSD-25-51. This is a final plat for Tanner Tanner's Mill subdivision Phase Two, lots one through six. Staff is recommended to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition present? And then, Mr.?
And Mr. Chairman, let me be clear that these conditions are related to the next case is a variance. That's why we're recommended to approve. This plat was on the agenda last month. We had to defer it because the applicant needed some variances on rideaway standards.
Okay. And then, Mr. Price, you're?
Yes.
Fine with it? Okay.
Yes, sir.
And we had a motion to approve with staff conditions. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. First item under New Business is HCSDB-25-10, and this is a request for four variances. Staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? What's the will of the commission?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. And it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. You're just going to stay there?
Till I get through.
Might as well, huh? I'd rather see you sit down and get up and sit down and get up.
It would be good exercise for me.
Next case on our agenda is HCSD-25-55. And this is preliminary plat for Tanner Mill subdivision. This plat has a staff recommendation to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition present? We need to capture those conditions in our motion. Yes. All right. We have a motion to approve with conditions and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three under New Business is HCSD-25-54, and this is a final plat for a planned unit development, lots one through 29, and a community lots one and two located at 2277 Udoa Ringgold Road. Staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item four on our agenda is HCSDB-25-9. And this is a request for three variances from street standards in Cambridge Square. Townhomes, lots one through 27, located at 6084 Arbor Way, and staff is recommended to defer. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'd like to go over before we decide on whether to defer or not.
Okay.
Mr. Schultz?
Sure. And the reason for the deferral is Highway Department is recommending, there's four variance requests. Hampton County Highway Department has reviewed these and are recommending to deny, except to prove one. So that's why they wanted to first meet with the applicant to talk about the need for these variances. But the first variance is basically for the typical cross-sections in the subregs, the variance to that standard. The Highway Department felt that was very vague because cross-section applies to a lot of information in that detail. They'd be very specific to what that variance request is. The second variance is reducing the rideaway width from 50 to 40 feet, shown the attached site plan. I think the biggest area of difference is variance number three. The subdivision regulations require cul-de-sacs for dead ends. The applicant wishes to do a hammerhead style development with a standard 50-foot radius instead of standard 50-foot radius cul-de-sac. That's the biggest contention I think the Highway Department has. And then variance request number four is to reduce the curb radii from 25 feet to 10 feet. And, sorry, rideaway radii from 25 to 10 and curb radii from 25 to 15 feet. The applicant has in his packet the need and justification for these variances. The Highway Department reviewed that and recommends a private roadway be constructed if the developer does not wish to extend. You see on the drawing here that hammerhead. The Highway Department wants that to connect to King's Hedge. The only way to get away from that is making that a private street, I believe. But the other variances, the Highway Department is still recommending denial. And that's the need for the deferral to get together and discuss further, the need for these variances.
All right. My name's Derek Blackwood. I'm with NAP Engineers. As Brian indicated, we're asking for several variances in the approval of the preliminary plat for this phase of Cambridge Square. We're proposing 26 three-story townhouse units on roughly two acres. And it's in the Cambridge Square Development, which is an urbanized mixed-use development. This townhouse development is in a transition zone from the commercial section immediately to the south and the single-family residential section immediately to the north of this. I, as Brian indicated, I should point out that the staff have indicated that they would be in support of the variances. I did speak with staff and they've indicated that the variances, they would be in support of the variances if the roads were private. They've also let me know that the variances would be required whether the roads are public or private. And as Brian indicated, the main issue at hand is the hammerhead turnaround. It's not an approved option within the subdivision regulations. It is allowed within the city of Chattanooga, which is literally a stone's throw away from this site, less than 100 feet away. And what we see is there's a disconnect between the Hamilton County subdivision regulations and the newly adopted fire code, which does allow hammerheads as a viable option for a turnaround. And then the subdivision regulations went back and looked and the cul-de-sac design has remained unchanged for over 40 years. So we've got rules and regulations in place. The county has rules and regulations in place for various reasons. For instance, we have requirements that roads and buildings be elevated to a certain elevation above the 100-year floodplain. Anyone can ask why that is and we can give them a clear answer. And that's just for the public health and safety. But in this instance, we couldn't get a real clear explanation as to why a hammerhead wasn't allowed other than maintenance reasons and it's just not in the county subdivision regulations. So there's inconsistencies between the fire code and the subdivision regulations that warrant a hardship in this instance. So the let's break down the the four variances. As Brian indicated, variance one is regarding the standard cross-section for the county, and it shows a 50-foot right-of-way, 26-foot of pavement, and standard curbs. And so basically what we're asking for, and a lot of this is kind of wrapped up in in variance number two, is that we're asking for a reduction in the rideaway from 50 to 40 feet for the the leg that's coming. It's kind of hard to see, but the leg that's coming in off of Arbor Way that Brian's highlighting there for you. And we've also shown a reduction in the road width from 26 feet to 22 feet. I know the subregs has a section that allows for 22-foot wide roads for anything under 1,000 feet long and interior interior roads. So may not, I think variance one and two could be wrapped together. But I just wanted to make sure I covered my bases on on the request. So with the 40-foot right-of-way and the reduced pavement, what we've got is we've got a screening berm to the north that separates the commercial and now this townhouse section and the residential portion of the the single-family residential portion of the development. And then we also have a sewer easement on the south side, and that constrains how we can fit these townhouses in here and the road width and the right-of-way width. And so with the urban style of development, where we've kind of pushed everything up closer to the road, similar to the the commercial section, we we looked at whether or not we could get a 50-foot right-of-way with, you know, power and communication easements. And we just couldn't get it to fit in there while maintaining the buffer to the north and the sewer easement to the south. So that's the first two variances there. The third variance is regarding the hammerhead. And I've touched on this briefly before is that this request doesn't create a hardship to the Highway Department of the county or to the general public. It's just not a tool that we have right now in the subdivision regulations. But, you know, it's my opinion that it should be so that we can have some coherence between the fire code and the subdivision regulations. Another reason for the for the request is at the end of the hammerhead, you've got some three-unit townhouses. A 50-foot radius would chew into the usable space that we have. And it would eliminate quite a few units, which would make this project infeasible. And I know there's been plenty of discussion about the update updating of the subdivision regulations. And it wouldn't surprise me if at the time that these are updated, that hammerheads were used. It's it's something that, when these regulations were adopted, that wasn't something that we did, you know, 30, 40 years ago. But this type of development's occurring more and more, and we feel like that it's something that needs to be addressed. Needless to say, we we do need a variance for that at this point. Variance number four is a request for a reduction in the right-of-way radii from 25 feet to 10 feet. So we have two situations at the hammerhead and then at the entrance to the development or to the townhouse section. And the reason for that is partly because we're so constrained from being able to back those townhouses up. They're they're sitting closer to the right-of-way. And the more you flare out those curb radii, the more you're going to chew into those those units there, further reducing the the ability for us to have those townhouse units there. We've run truck turn analysis for an aerial fire truck for emergency services. The ladder trucks can make this this turn movements very easily. Emergency services indicated that they didn't have any issues with it. And so we would ask that the commission consider these variances for approval. Again, this is a urban style of development that is a little bit different than I think the county subregs are suited towards. And so we feel that this is in character with the development. It it provides a good transition buffer between the commercial section and the residential section. And furthermore, connecting the two with with the road going up to the north, it's just going to create more cut-through movements that that we don't want to have. We want to maintain that separation. And and a cut-through would would connect the two with the townhouses and single families. So with that, I'll answer any questions and we can move forward on the the plat.
Mr. General?
Derek, I don't think staff's telling you no. I think we just need time to sit down with you guys and really understand the asks and why and have a dialogue about, you know, why some of these rules are in place, why it might be a good idea for us to grant a variance. I just don't know that we're there yet. So I mean, respectfully, I would just request that we defer this 30 days, have a discussion about it, see if we can come to terms. And then and then come back next month and and, you know, have a clearer idea of what what staff wants, what the, you know, the basically the the reason behind the rules that exist on the books are, and if it's necessary to have those in place for this particular request.
And I appreciate you bringing that up. I did speak after staff recommended to defer and to deny. I spoke with the Highway Department staff. And as I mentioned before, the the reason was we've we've approved these for private roads. The only reason why we're showing to deny these is because it's public. And the only other reason for the the denial or the hesitation is for maintenance purposes. And when you have a hammerhead versus a regular cul-de-sac, there's not real maintenance concerns. The difference in maintenance concerns is very little, little to no maintenance concerns between a hammerhead versus a cul-de-sac. It's just not in the regs. I think that was really the only reason. And one of the previous applicants that we had on that we had was was a hammerhead turnaround on a private road. And there were no issues with that. I think it's just a public road standpoint.
I would just say, you know, and maybe this is on my staff for not alerting me to the conversation, but I I was not aware that there was a back and forth on this particular project. I remember the original discussion about, you know, that it doesn't meet the standards. And I know you guys have my phone number. You can give me a call anytime when you have a question and staff isn't being reasonable or whatever. So again, I think, you know, I really feel like we just need to have a better discussion about this and give time for us to have some dialogue and see if there's a path forward on it before we vote yes or no on this. I would move to defer 30 days.
We have a motion to defer for 30 days. It has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess. You calling somebody? Next case on the agenda is HCSD-25-56. It's preliminary plat for Cambridge Square, lots one through 27. I don't know that we need to hear anything on that, right?
I think if the variance, I mean, the plat's going to be contingent on the variances.
Yes. So what's the will of the commission?
All moves to defer 30 days.
We have a motion to defer for 30 days and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The next case on our agenda is item six. It's case HCSD-25-57. It's a final plat for Faithview subdivision, lots one through 30, located at 7038 Udoa Georgetown Road. Staff is recommended to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition present? What's the will of the commission? Capture those conditions for me. Yep, we've got a motion to approve with conditions. And it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven is SDP-25-34, and this preliminary plat for Southside Gardens subdivision, lots one through 14, located at 2639 Long Street. Staff is recommended to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition present? And you're the applicant?
Yes.
Are you, what are your thoughts in regards to the conditions?
Ben Skidmore, Ken Whon. We, our request is to remove the EPB. The condition is around EPB easement and space. We've coordinated with EPB and have an email from Chuck Penn. I think by the time we uploaded it to the portal, it was well after everything had been distributed. But we have confirmation from EPB that they do not need that easement. So their request is to approve without the condition. And I can circulate the email from Chuck. I think it is on the web portal as well. Sorry. There's only one condition. It was around the EPB easement along the frontage of Long Street.
And staff's fine with that because if if EPB's not good with that condition, it'll be called on the final plat anyway. So it's good with moving that condition.
We have a motion to approve without conditions and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight on our agenda is SDP-25-35, and this preliminary plat for Webb Road subdivision, lots one through 11, located at 4251 Webb Road. Staff is recommended to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present? Any issues with the conditions?
Move to approve with conditions.
We have a motion to approve with conditions and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine on our agenda is SDP-25-36, and this is a final plat on Eli Road subdivision Phase Two, lots 17 through 28. Staff is recommended to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present? We have a motion to approve with conditions and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 10 is SDP-25-37. This is a preliminary plat for Riverton North subdivision, lots one through 227. And it's located at 1547 Mercer Street. Staff is recommended to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition present? Is there any opposition present? All right. There are two cases on Mercer Street on today's agenda. This is one that is in regards to the preliminary plat. It's not a rezoning. Are you in opposition to that preliminary plat?
Yes.
Okay. And is our applicant present? Okay, thank you. Mr. Schultz.
Yeah, I mean, this is a preliminary plat. It's already been rezoned as well. Uh, I believe it says a PUD on top of it, had conditions as part of that PUD. Staff reviewed this plat. It does meet the conditions of the subdivision requirements, and staff recommends to approve. Uh, the preliminary plat as presented with some conditions of changes that need to be shown, which is typical on plating at this stage.
Thank you. All right. We'll hear from the applicant first. Sure. Yes. Do you want to chair the meeting? Tiffany?
This is very confusing, boards.
Mark, this is not the one that your residents emailed us about. This is a plat for Riverton North, not the one that's happening on Mercer Street with RN 13.
Why does it say 1547 Mercer Street?
Is that the address they gave us? I'm not sure how that happened.
Yeah, this is a different.
This is the lot that Collier Construction wants to build on. I have a picture of the yellow sign out on the property. It does not mention this case. And if you'll see it.
The case that you're referring to?
I know, 22025168.
Right, that's number, I believe, nine.
10.
No, it's number 10 on our rezone agenda. That's not where we are. That's later.
I do. Well, I'm not sure. Do I need to oppose? Okay. The times are confusing.
Tiffany, are you otherwise okay with the conditions?
Yes, sir.
What's the will of the commission? We have a motion to approve with conditions, and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, to be clear from staff, for the applicant, the opposition, we wouldn't have a sign for subdivision plat on the property. So that is one of the differences. This would not have had a sign.
All right, the next case is the item that we have here under old business, and the applicant's requested for it to be withdrawn. It's case 2025-0147.
No, sorry, it's the second one, 154.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, which it actually says right there, withdrawn. Thank you. Um, okay, on case 2025-0147, located at 915 Barton Avenue. It's an application to rezone from RN 2 to CN. Neighborhood commercial zone, and staff has recommended to deny the applicant's request and approve other. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present? Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Chairman, while he's coming up, I may, uh, this was deferred last month. I think we were directed from Plan Commission that the request for CN made a lot of sense to this location, because staff come up with some conditions for this body to look at. So that's what we've done, is come back with some conditions to approve CN with four conditions. Uh, residential, office, personal service, retail, and eating and drinking established with fewer than 50 seats, and no drive-in or curb services will be the only uses allowed. Hours of operation limited to 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Uh, to keep the restaurant small, we recommended no dumpster and no grease trap shall be permitted, and retain existing structure, which is a single-family home for construction, unless needed for construction repairs for ADA compliance. So staff recommends, based on direction we received last month, approve with these four conditions.
Thank you. And are you okay with those conditions? Okay, thank you. Well, thank you for working with staff over the last month to do that, and thank you, Brian, for your effort on that front.
I directed dimly.
Thank you, Emily.
I take no credit for this. Emily did work.
What's the will of the commission?
I move to approve with conditions the CN zone.
We have a motion to approve with conditions, and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Case 2025-0154. The applicant, I'm sorry. Okay, we got a motion to withdraw. And it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, first item under new business is a mandatory referral. It's item one, it's case 2025-0156. And it's for an unopened 400 block of Maplewood Avenue. And it's a right-of-way closure and abandonment. Staff has recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve. It has been seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two on our agenda is also a mandatory referral. It's case 2025-0160, and it's located in the 6100 block of Udoa Georgetown Road. It's for a right-of-way closure and abandonment. Staff has recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item... Thank you. Item three on our agenda is case 2025-0161, and this is in the 6200 block of Udoa Georgetown Road. It's an application to rezone from R5 and M1 to R1. Staff has recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just to make the Plan Commission aware, this case and the next case, which are connected, this is our first two cases that we have seen this month as far as the Plan Commission staff that are located in the Plan Hamilton boundary. Uh, Plan Hamilton, um, you know, as adopted in September by this body, has not been adopted by the County Commission, but staff and RPA and the Plan Commission were using this as a guide. So if you would like, I can go into the presentation. But again, we have a recommendation to approve both cases. Let you be aware that this is the first case that's in Plan Hamilton boundary.
Thank you. Mr. January.
I just think it'd be valuable for Brian to give just a brief overview of the thought process staff put together on this, since it's our first Plan Hamilton case.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And bear with us, it's a lot. We struggled with this one because it's a big case. First one off the door is in Plan Hamilton. Uh, but this is a rezoning request to rezone from, um, R5 and M1 to R1 for a single-family development, ultimately to be included in a PUD. It's roughly 6.1 acres that's being rezoned. The number of units that's actually being built in this area being rezoned is actually seven units. But overall, for the entirety of the PUD, it's roughly 245 units. Once we get in the PUD, you'll see that's a reduction in units. The overall density is 2.09 for the overall side of Cambridge Square. Uh, this case, and this property's had multiple cases over the years between the south and north, but on this particular piece of property, in 1975, it received a special permit for a horse show facility. That's why it's got the crosshatching, it's not a PUD. But in 1975, it was a horse show facility. It's currently vacant. Uh, to the north is vacant land, which is part of the Cambridge Square PUD. Uh, to the west, a single unit residential. Uh, to the south is vacant, which will be developed as a single family. And to the east is the Honors Golf Course. Here's a view of the site. This is north of the site, some of the single-family dwellings, south of the site, west. Uh, here's Plan Hamilton. Again, it was adopted by this body in September. Uh, so the plan, or place type recommendation is resort recreation. Uh, I believe that's due to the Honors Golf Course next door. Here's a closer view of that place type. It's in the red circle. You can see it's the green, which is resort recreation. One of the things we look at in terms of zoning cases is some questions we look at each month. And so I'll put those in here. Is the request consistent with the proposed amendment with adopted land use plan or area plan? Again, Plan Hamilton was adopted by this body in September, so we're using it as a guide. Uh, the place type is resort recreation, which supports outdoor activities such as camping, boating, golfing, boatering, mountain biking, as well as corporate nature retreats, ecotourism activities. Uh, these places focus on nature, exceptional views, and historic landmarks. So that's the resort place type that's placed on this property. You also go further into place type. It also provides what the predominant and secondary uses are, or sorry, limited uses. Uh, the predominant use in this resort place type is campgrounds, RVs, uh, RV parks, hotels, cabins, restaurants, marinas, camp stores, golf courses, and agriculture-related businesses, riding academies, and farming activities. Limited uses that you would see in this type place type include single-unit housing, which could be detached and attached, and reception facilities. Currently, Hammond County does not have a resort recreation zone to fulfill this place type. Last year, I guess in 2024, we did create a parks and resort, a parks and recreation district that was recommended by this body. It got to the County Commission. It was deferred for several months, waiting on Plan Hamilton to catch up. Ultimately, that request was withdrawn at County Commission. And part of that park zone, it did not include residential development. So that zone would not allow residential development in that park zone that was created last year. It was more to be used primarily for county-owned property like around McDonald Farm, Chester Frost, that type of facility, what you'd normally see. Uh, just a reminder, uh, the budding, is this amendment compatible with existing adjacent land uses? Well, it is. The adjacent land uses is R1, which says special access for a permit for a PUD. So this request would be an extension. The second, the third question we ask, what's the trend of development in general in the area? Well, this area's been transitioning to suburban residential into primarily a single-unit detached residential. It also has commercial at the heart of Cambridge Square. Uh, as a reminder, this property is currently zoned M1. The M1 district currently allows single-unit and two-unit detached residential units in the current zone. However, the density is higher. It's like 5.8 units per acre. Has no maximum building height. So about, by rezoning to R1, that does limit the density as well as a hot condition, because it could be developed today under M1, but you would not have a hot condition or a density condition. Some of the use comparisons here I have on the screen, just as a reminder, you know, in the M1, have a lot of uses that could be allowed in M1. For industrial uses, to institutional, to office, to commercial, and multi-unit residential. By, again, downzoning to R1, it does limit what could be developed on this property today. Even though the place type says resort recreation, by rezoning to R1, that does limit what could be developed on that property. The M1 and R5 zones have a minimum lot size of 7,500 square foot on sewers. Uh, the proposed R1 has 6,000 square foot, which is a difference. But if it's in the PUD, that also controls the density. Some of the zoning standards, again, as I said, while they go, M1 has a minimum lot size of 7,500 square foot. R1 has 6,000 square foot. You see the lot width is from 60 to 50. And then density is eight in M1. It's five in a R1 PUD. So it does, the PUD does control the density. Building height, M1, there is no maximum building height. Uh, by including this, downzoning this to R1, the height is limited two and a half stories or 35 feet. So again, you can see the differences there. Downzoning to R1 puts stricter standards on the property than currently exists today. What's the adjacent land uses? This area is transitioning. You have a golf course to the east, single unit and vacant land, which will be developed as single unit. So the uses for single family would be compatible with what's abutting this property. As I mentioned a minute ago, the M1 and R5 zone does allow single family, but it has a density of 5.8 gross. Uh, if this area is rezoned to R1, it would only have seven lots in that rezoning area, which is a density of 1.1, which is less than what's currently allowed today. Um, as we'll talk about in the PUD in a few minutes, um, the overall PUD was originally approved for 240 dwelling units. This new PUD amendment reduces that number to 245. That's 219 single-family dwellings and 26 townhome units. It also reduces the density from 3.12 to 2.09 dwelling units per acre. So just a reminder, the M1 zone is the second most intense zone in Hammond County zoning. It permits industrial uses and commercial uses. Uh, the existing proposed zone, which is M1 and R5, does allow single family, but as I mentioned earlier, the density's higher and the height would be no hot restrictions. Um, as part of Plan Hamilton, we did include requirements about plan amendments. Uh, there were three bullets on when a plan amendment would be needed. Uh, one is a full year, a full plan review every five years. We would also do an annual review by staff. And then applicant requested plan amendments as necessary when requested by rezonings, uh, alternating every month between one side of the river. RPA reviewed this rezoning request. Um, we determined it did not require a plan amendment. Even though the place type says resort recreation, uh, staff felt this did not require a plan amendment. We also don't have any criteria that has not been developed to determine when a plan amendment would be necessary. The reason that we did not feel a plan amendment's necessary is the proposed use of single-family homes is a limited use in the resort recreation place type, which includes single-unit detached and attached housing, which is what the applicant's requesting. Uh, the plan notes that limited uses are less common, but can still be compatible with the predominant use if limited to certain locations, limited in size, and buffer from adjacent uses. It's not clear that the secondary use, which is single-family, is part of the resort, which is Honors Golf Course, but it is adjacent to the golf course. So it would be considered a part of the, could be considered part of the resort development. One of the things that we did note, uh, if the County Commission, or this Plan Commission feels that the plan amendment is necessary, we would work with the applicant to submit an application to amend the plan. But again, based on the criteria we've looked at and the review, uh, we felt from staff that it did not meet the criteria for a plan amendment. So again, this request for single units to downzone from M1 to R5 is compatible with the limited uses in the place type. Uh, the request for single-unit detached residential is compatible with adjacent land uses and develop a form in the area. Uh, this request would be an extension of existing zone. Uh, the request does downzone the allowable density and intensity of land use, which better aligns with Plan Hamilton. And so staff recommends to approve, um, this rezoning request and to amend the PUD in the next case. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. Although it's a lot, but this is a very important case, with it being the first one up the door, Plan Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Mr. January.
So I, we had a lot of discussion back and forth on this one, uh, over the past couple of weeks, but, um, I would, I would agree with you that it meets the plan. Um, I just want for the public, for it to be very clear, kind of why this request is happening. And I, my understanding is that it's more of a form question as opposed to anything else. They want to build something that is allowed in R1 that would be difficult or impossible to do in M1, but it's actually less intense than what they could do currently in M1.
That's correct. And again, the place type, which is resort recreation, it does leave a single unit as a secondary use.
Right.
And this overall is a resort. If you consider that way, it's overall resort recreation. And we don't have a zone at this point that would allow this type of use.
Yeah, I just, again, I want to be real clear to the public that, um, I, this is really more just about what the development looks like as opposed to anything else. That they want to build a certain style, and this change allows them to build that certain style at a lower density, lower intensity than what they could currently do, um, in M1, and it also meets Plan Hamilton.
True. And I'll sort of highlight on the screen here, the area where, this little area right through here, I believe that is the area asking to be rezoned. So you see it's larger lots, uh, in this area here. Everything else is already existing, but the area in rezoning is right through here, this little cul-de-sac.
I think I asked earlier, but is there any opposition present?
And we did not receive any opposition emails to this case.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve, and it has been seconded. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Holland.
Uh, I just want to reiterate a little bit of what Mr. January said. Uh, I did have some people call and question this. And the way I understand it, and Brian has explained it very well, it is less dense than it could have been done otherwise. And so for that reason, I will go along with it, but I want to make that very clear. Thank you.
All in, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on the agenda is case 2025-0162, and this is located at 6100 and 6200 block of Udoa Georgetown Road, and it's a special permit for residential plan unit development. Is there any opposition present? What's the will of the commission? We have a motion to approve, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on the agenda, item five is case 2025-0163. And this is an application to rezone from C1 to MXU Mixed Use Zone. And it is located at an unaddressed property in 8,400 block of Hickson Pike. Staff has recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? Yes.
We don't get a ton of visitors from Lakeside, so I just wanted to acknowledge and thank, uh, City Manager ACOF for coming up in support of this.
Thank you. What's the will of the commission? We have a motion to approve and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Penn. Item six on our agenda is case 2025 dash zero one six four. And this is located at 6,112 and 6,118 Hickson Pike. It's an application to rezone from RN one dash six to RN dash three. Staff is recommended to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present? Any concerns? Thank you. We have a motion to approve with conditions and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven is case 2025 dash zero one six five. And this is located in, at, uh, 4115 and some unaddressed properties in the 4,100 and 4,200 block of Shalford Road. Staff is recommended to deny an applicant's request and approve other for a rezoning application from RN one dash six to CC commercial zone and, um, IL industrial light. Is there any opposition present? And the applicant's present? Okay. We have a motion to approve the staff recommendation. And it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number eight on our agenda is mandatory referral case 2025 dash zero one six six. And this is for right of way closure abandonment adjacent to 100 block of Lawn Street. Staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present?
Mr. Chen, we did receive an email in opposition to this case as well.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Schultz, will you explain this one for us?
Sure. This is a mandatory referral, uh, to abandon a portion of the right of way, uh, for the applicant, uh, to construct an accessory dwelling unit on the back of the property. There's been no zoning history or, um, in this area, but in 2017, this alley to the south, uh, that was reclosed, uh, closed in 2017 with conditions. Here's a view of the adjacent property. You can see it does up up to Stringer's Ridge Park to the west. Uh, everything abutting this property is single unit residential. Uh, there are steep slopes on this property from the image here. You can see, uh, it's really steep. They wish to build a ADU in the back, um, off this alley and they need additional land, I believe, uh, the, this is a 10 foot alley. I can't remember the alley we have, but they'll get half of it to add additional land to their property. Here's a view of the right of way off Spears Avenue, the right of way is just behind these trees. This is Lawn Street. This is the applicant's house, uh, behind this house is where they wish to construct the ADU. Here's a site plan submitted application. You can see this is the, um, I believe this is the ADU and it's a, sorry, it's a 14 foot alley. So they'll get seven feet of that alley and it helps them a little bit in construction their ADU. Uh, this alley is undeveloped and is a dead end to Stringer's Ridge Park. Uh, again, the right of way dead ends at Stringer's Ridge, so it does not provide future vehicle or access. Uh, the right of way could provide a pedestrian connection to Stringer's Ridge Park. However, we did reach out the parks, uh, department. The city has no, no, does not have any current plans to provide a pedestrian connection from Lawn Street to Stringer's Ridge. Even if they did, you still have seven feet left over, uh, for that pedestrian connections. The adjacent lots that but the right of way have street runs on Sawyer Street and Lawn Street. Uh, there are slopes in the right of way, which may constructing a road to current city standards very difficult. Uh, this request does meet the city of Chattanooga right away abandonment policy. So staff recommended, uh, to approve, uh, this request for abandonment.
Thank you. Sir, did you want to speak in opposition? And, uh, Mr. Jones, come on up. If, if you're okay, we'd like to hear from opposition first and then give you an opportunity to respond.
All right. Hello, Commission. Uh, my name is Chris Orr. I currently live at 119 Sawyer Street, which is the property adjacent and directly south to the property in question. Um, and I'd like to speak a little bit on the long term and neighborhood perspective as a Hill City resident. My wife and I have lived in 119 Sawyer for almost five years. Um, Hill City is growing very quickly. We're seeing new development all over the place, which in our opinion is great for the, the neighborhood. Uh, but with every new home or ADU added, we're seeing more pressure on drainage and runoff systems. Uh, the staff report notes the topography in the alley is unlikely fit for a road. Uh, but I think the grade is very similar to both Lawn Street and Sawyer Street. And I think either extending the easement that 10102 have done for driveway access or garage access or pedestrian and bike pathway up that alleyway would be great for both me personally, access, direct access to Stringer's Ridge, but also the community. Uh, we have mountain bikers zooming by on Sawyer Street all the time. So a pedestrian or mountain bike route directly onto Spears Avenue would also be of, of preference. Last, or in addition, the natural slope, um, in these hilly, hilly areas, um, are often end up being the only reliable path for future drainage. So as we continue to see development, either ADUs or larger footprint, uh, homes in Hill City, um, I suspect that future drainage considerations should be taken into consideration. Uh, we've already seen the consequences, uh, when drainage isn't carefully planned, just one block over at 28 Sawyer Street. Uh, a new construction project within the last year was completed and there was a dispute over some stormwater flow that resulted in the builder having to install a retaining wall and reroute drainage. Um, and I've learned this through a neighbor. So I think keeping these flexible corridors like this alley is important for future stormwater solutions or considerations. Um, staff also acknowledged the alley could serve as a pedestrian path to Stringer's Ridge. Uh, we have already seen that possibility emerge, I think with the, the easement for 10102 Lawn Street. Um, so I think with a modest investment, this corridor could easily become a safe pedestrian and bike connection, uh, between Lawn Street and Sawyer Street, providing access to Stringer's Ridge, as mentioned, uh, which I think is a public benefit for both the neighborhood and the community. Uh, we also know that the alley is not required for an ADU to be built, uh, just five lots east of this at 28 Lawn Street. A buddy of mine actually recently purchased that property, uh, where a whole, a brand new home and ADU were built without abandoning the right of way between Lawn and Sawyer Street again. So it makes it clear that the request isn't necessarily about necessity, but just about convenience. Beyond the practical concerns, this corridor serves as a vegetated buffer that stabilizes the hillside, absorbs runoff, prevents erosion directly into my house and my neighbors. Um, provides separation, visual separation between our properties and then keeping the charm, um, and residential look of Hill City. I think removing it disturbs that slope, uh, reducing tree cover, impacting privacy. And lastly, I think approving this would set a precedent that any currently unused right of way with no active city plans, but potential future ones, um, would be, um, approved for individual benefit, not necessarily community benefit. So when you take all this together, stormwater concerns, the need for future drainage droughts, potential pedestrian connectivity, and of course, the ability to build the ADU without this abandonment. Uh, it's clear, me as the public and I have some of my neighbors through discussion, politely or respectfully ask you to deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Jones, I do have a question for you in regards to say to you, what would the setback be from the alley?
Uh, so currently the, so the proposed plan is to have it on the current property line. So with the alleyway abandonment, it would be seven feet off of the new property line. Uh, so the alley is 14 feet wide. So the abandonment would put seven feet of property, uh, to my client and seven, and seven feet of property to the adjacent neighbor's property.
What would be, what would be this? I thought a, ADU had to be five foot.
Five foot off of property, off the rear.
So really we're talking about two feet? What, why is that two feet needed?
No, it's a, it's a, so it's a seven foot. Um, so it would, yeah, it's about a two foot variance. Um, so if we, if, if the alleyway is abandoned, it'll, it'll gain about seven feet of property to the rear. Um, so they're looking at having the ADU about seven feet off of that proposed new property line. Um, otherwise, if we, if the alleyway, uh, is not abandoned, then we'll be shifting that the ADU, uh, closer to the, the existing house about five feet.
Okay.
Um, so they're wanting to preserve additional green space, uh, between the two homes.
Gotcha.
Alan Jones, Stunt Creek Consulting.
Thank you. Floor is yours.
I, I think that was mostly it. So, uh, so Alan Jones, um, so my client is looking at, uh, building an ADU on the back of this property. Um, the, the detached ADUs, uh, requirement for setbacks is five feet from the rear property line. Uh, the request is to put it, uh, essentially at the existing property line where it is now, which would be a zero foot setback. Um, but instead of going for a variance on trying to get a zero foot setback on the alley, uh, they're, they're looking at a request to have the alleyway abandoned. Uh, I've reached out to, uh, both Councilwoman Jenny Hill and, uh, I think, I believe her name is Mary with the Hill, uh, Hill City Neighborhood Association. Haven't heard any, uh, negative feedback from them yet. Um, and, uh, in talking with the city, there, there are no plans to extend, uh, trail or access to Stringer's Ridge from this alleyway. Um, so the request is just to allow a little bit more green space, uh, between the two units, uh, on the property. Uh, but they are planning to move forward with building the ADU. Uh, just trying to, but between the steep slopes and, and having a little additional green space, uh, having some of that flexibility, uh, just, you know, to, to work in that area is, is what the client's asking for.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Law.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is the construction of the ADU possible without the variance or is it technically impossible?
It is possible.
Okay.
And we've gotten, the architects got some alternative plans if, if the alleyway, you know, doesn't pass at city council level.
Yes. Alan, have you all had a chance to talk?
We have not. I'll make sure I get his, I'll, I'll get his number before we leave.
Yeah. And, and did I hear the, the, the remaining part of the unimproved alley is, would, would plan to go to the adjacent property owner? So is he the adjacent property owner in this case that?
Yes.
That, does he know that that's going to happen?
Yes.
What I'm, what I'm seeing is he doesn't, he doesn't realize he may gain the additional property from the unopened alley, which is pretty normal in a circumstance like this. So, I mean,
Yeah.
I think you guys should talk.
Yeah.
And get a better understanding of that or, or, I don't know, really, Mr. Chairman, how to perceive. They, they, they probably need to talk so the opposition understands. Man, I certainly understand why you're concerned.
Mr. Anderson.
Um, I believe Councilwoman Hill, Chairwoman Hill will, will be agreeable to this. And yeah, I know you've already talked to her. I, I'm going to move approval on this. And sir, what, what Commissioner Holland was saying is if there's a 14 foot alley that's abandoned, the property owners on either side get half of it. So this applicant will get seven feet and so would you. That's what he was explaining.
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, I don't want to connect just a little bit of my property taxes. It'll do nothing with it. And then, you know, if there's a, uh, whatever the original name is called, the zero foot setback, potentially an ADU will ground on my property line, which is elevated above my properties, but looking down directly into my backyard.
City, city council will be a month from now. I encourage the applicant and the opposition to speak between now and then, as well as both of you speak to Councilwoman Hill. And with that, I move approval.
We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We had a couple notes. Okay. Uh, we'll start down here on my left. Mr. Maybe?
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
That's quick. I got six yes and five no's. Anybody else? Yes, we got six yes and five no's.
Motion carries. Next case on the agenda is case eight. It's item eight on our agenda. It's mandatory referral. I'm sorry, that was the one we just took action on. Item nine, case 2025 dash zero one six seven, located at 1309 Chamberlain Avenue. Staff is recommended, recommended to deny the applicant's request and approve other for rezoning from RN dash one dash five to TRN dash three. Is there any opposition present?
Mr. Mr. Chen, we did receive the, an email in opposition as well.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Schultz.
Yeah, this is case 2025 one sixty seven. Uh, this is a request to rezone from a current, a piece of property is zoned RN one and five, residential neighborhood zone to TRN three, which is traditional residential neighborhood zone with conditions. The applicant did supply some conditions. Uh, proposed use is multi unit residential on one lot. This is, it's a roughly 0.22 acres in size. Number of units proposed is four. That's a density of 18 dwelling units per acre. Here are the two conditions supplied by the applicant. Max of four units with three new additional units and the one existing unit to remain, a maximum building height of 35 feet. Uh, there's been no recent zoning history for this side, other than equivalency mapping through the new zoning code. Uh, 1314 Duncan, you see just the northeast was rezoned, uh, from R three MD, uh, to UGC in 2021, and then equivalency mapped last year to TRN three. Uh, everything to the west and south and east of this property is RN one and five. And to the north, you have RN three. This is a vacant piece of property. Uh, to the north, it's a mixture of single unit and two unit residential. Uh, to the west, a single unit residential, as well as the south, a single unit residential. And really abutting this property to the east is multi units, four units, four single family detached units on one lot. Here's a view of the side against vacant, uh, to the west is a single unit dwelling. Here's a view of the side against vacant. North of the side, single family dwellings. South of the side, single family dwelling. Uh, this is east of the side. Those are the four units that are single family detached on one lot. So there is pressing area for a similar type development. And this is west of the side of the single family dwelling. Uh, this property is located in a historic river to ridge plan, which is adopted in 2020. Uh, the, the place type recommendation is urban residential. Here's a closer view of that place type recommendation, which is the brown, which again is urban residential. Uh, this is the original site plan submitted by the applicant. Uh, it's four, uh, detached structures, four, I mean, sorry, four units. These are single unit, uh, one unit, uh, structures. Here in the very back is the existing single family home. The applicant wishes to keep that. Uh, I believe the applicant met with the neighborhood and has since submitted a revised site plan. Uh, it's now three, um, units that are detached. I then keep this existing building and rehab that. So it'd be a total of four units on one lot. You see the right hand side, these are the four units that are also located in one lot. Uh, this side is surrounded by a mix of residential land uses included single unit detached and two unit and multi unit. Uh, the size primarily surrounded by RN one and five zoning. However, to the north of the side is zoned RN three and TRN three zoning. Uh, the development form along Chamberlain Avenue is urban residential, one to two story single unit detached dwellings on historic lots of record with on-street and onsite parking. Uh, the TRN three zone, which is one of our newer zones, will introduce a higher intense development form to this area along Chamberlain Avenue. Uh, the zone has a 50 foot maximum building height for multi unit residential dwellings, which is what this development will be. However, the applicant is proposing condition to limit that to 35 feet. As stated earlier, the place type recommendation is, um, urban residential place type. Uh, the primary uses include single family detached ADUs and two to four units per lot. That typically means in one structure. Secondary uses do include multi family buildings and of five or 12 units per lot. That's a secondary use. We look at secondary use criteria when reviewing this. It did meet some of the criteria, but not all of them. You don't have to meet all, but it did meet some. Uh, one of the major issues, it does not run a A street. This is just a local street. Uh, we do have a new cottage court. The cottage court or the TRN one zone or TRN two zone better aligns with the place type recommendation adopting the land use plan. We did reach out to the applicant and got his thoughts on why not the cottage court. And he came back with, which makes sense. The cottage court development have a 15-foot perimeter setback and a minimum open space requirement, which makes this very difficult to develop under the cottage court. And the TRN and TRN-2 zones do allow up to six units, but they all have to be located in one building. They cannot be separate. That's why he's going to TRN-3 to allow the multi-unit. Again, the TRN, TRN-1 and TRN-2 zones makes more sense in this location. The proposed development form of the four detached units in one lot does not align with missing middle housing objectives of the Chattanooga zoning code. Those objectives are to have it, the missing middle in one structure, not four separate individual structures. We did struggle with this one during the review. At the end of the day, we felt that four detached structures does not align with the city's vision of missing middle housing all located in one structure. And you can still do this under various other zones like the TRN-1-2 or TRN-1-1. So staff recommends to deny this request and approve the TRN-1 zone at this location.
Thank you.
I got a question.
Yes.
Of staff.
Mr. Payne.
The missing middle you're just referred to. We have a problem. We're okay with this if it's in one building and not if it, this, just gotta tell you, that makes no sense to me at all. You would think that it would be more appropriate or more advantageous to have it be in separate buildings than one building.
We, I got your questions, and Karen and I briefly discussed this. I knew you'd ask this question. I'm probably not the best to answer that, but we did talk, look at missing middle housing, and it appears that missing middle is talks about those units, that four to five units. But it's typically talking about in one structure, not separate. It changes the rhythm of the form or appearance. When you're driving down a street, you see what looks like to be a single-family dwelling, and all of a su, where they are. And all of a sudden, you see four single-family dwellings in one lot. That's probably not the best, maybe Karen or somebody else can answer better than I can, but.
We've spent a lot of time talking about this in the past couple of months, because the TRN-3 is the zone that kicks in. You can have the separate buildings, and we've had a couple of requests for that. We had one last month where someone had the duplex and wanted to build other structure, which is kind of a similar situation. So we've been looking at what is the intent of the infill development, how does it work, and then best practices. And so someone, one of our coworkers is doing some research on that to see if there's something else we want to do with it. That's not how the zoning ordinance is currently set up. The TRN-3 is where it kicks in. We also want to make sure we don't get pushback that we're getting infill development that's not compatible, where we might have more resistance to, you know, introducing two, three, four, five, and six unit developments. So we want to make sure that we're getting that right. So we're spending, we've already spent some time on it. We plan on spending some more time on it. We have maybe an idea. This one, we spent hours on this case trying to come up with, you know, a possible solution. It's not in the presentation, but there is a paragraph in the staff recommendation that gives some a little advice if planning commission is interested in improving it with conditions. But at this point, that is where we are, but that's something we're spending quite a bit of time on, making sure detached versus attached, and is the way the current zoning ordinance is set up, the way it needs to be. Because we want to introduce housing, but we also want to make sure we don't have resistance to introducing it because it's not compatible. And so we're doing work, work on that now.
Hey Karen, to Mr. Payne's question, would an ADU be classified as missing middle by the city?
We don't, I think when we're thinking about missing middle, we're really thinking kind of three, four, five, six, and kind of small multi-unit. So when we talk about it just internal, we are not considering ADU as missing middle. That's just an additional housing option. I think we're thinking about it more when we're talking about, we just haven't gotten the habit. I'm sure it is. It's just one of the tools in increasing the housing supply diversity.
I mean, missing middle to me is a function of price, right? I mean, that's what you're trying to accomplish is get people in housing. But I certainly understand trying to do it in a way that you don't get pushback. But I think, you know, for me, it's always about trying to get more housing, not less, if it's possible.
And we had the same discussion, because we do want to increase housing supply diversity. We don't want to get to where their product, where there's something that's not compatible, and then people are more resistant to it. So we did talk about deferring this, but felt that moving it forward, that's why there's a little paragraph in the staff recommendation. Planning Commission sometimes asks us about conditions, that we could propose conditions. So there is some discussion about if planning commission wants to move forward with conditions. We did try to supply that since we've been asking the pastor planning commission, but we decided to move it forward. But that is something we're working on, and no, we need to spend some time on it.
And then Mr. Bird.
Thanks. Yeah, I appreciate the degree of thoughtfulness that staff has taken with, you know, kind of mulling those over. The way that I've, you know, from missing middle is, I think the traditional definition of it is that, you know, it's basically anything that is between single-family residential and then large-scale, like, you know, large garden-style apartment. So everything from duplex, triplex, ADUs, cottage courts. Actually, one of my favorite versions of missing middle, I think, in the city of Chattanooga is like catty corner diagonal from this in that multi, it's like a 16-unit over there on the corner of Greenwood and Duncan. You know, that's, it's like, yeah, 16, I think it's 16 units, or it's 12 or 16, something like that. Wonderful old garden style, now condos, but, but in terms of, you know, like, missing middle, that's kind of a, that's a tough thing to put a definite, a working definition on as like a, you know, I think, I think it sounds like there's, there's a, you know, sliding scale of consensus on what that means.
Mr. Bird.
Yeah, just piggyback on that. I mean, there's definitely a lot of fuzziness to this, not even definition. It's just kind of a loose term that gets thrown around to describe something between single-family or a four-story, five-story, et cetera apartment building. But there is a significant contingent of people, I think, that lean more towards this is something that looks like a single-family house when you drive by. So, you know, you see a single-family house, single-family house, and then you see a quadplex that if you're not trained to look for the extra meters or the extra doors, you might never, ever think that it's, it's anything else than a single-family house, because it has the same form and general size. So it's definitely a fuzzy definition.
Mr. Chair, one of the things that we talked about when we developed the zoning ordinance was that the cottage court, we'd most likely have to revisit it, get feedback on it, and we might need to revisit it. So we appreciate Mr. Jones making a little effort to kind of figure out why cottage court would or would not work on the site. So we'll use his feedback, and when we think about missing middle or kind of those other uses, we're gonna take another look at cottage court. That's something we knew we were gonna need to do. But now that we've had some real-world, like, examples of what's working, what's not, we'll revisit that too.
And since you just brought that up, if I could make some specific recommendations.
Yes, please.
From my review on this case, thinking, I mean, this looks like something that should fall into cottage court, but the 15-foot setback is an obvious hurdle. And I think it might be more appropriate to have the setbacks of the cottage court match the surrounding area. So if you're in an RN-1 zone, then, and you've got five-foot setbacks in like an RN-1-5 or an RN-1-3, then the cottage court might also have five-foot setbacks, just so you're being consistent with the neighborhood. And then the other big point that I didn't see mentioned here, maybe I just missed it, was that there's also a 3,000-square-foot open space requirement, which for a small lot like this is really, really difficult to meet. So maybe having some sort of sliding scale based on the size of the lot, rather than a straight 3,000-square-foot unit, because that really limits you to a certain size of lot. You can't do it on a double or triple residential lot that you would find in Highland Park or Hill City or anything like that.
Okay, thank you. And I think that that was one of the comments about that the, this size of this lot, because this is like a lot and a half for Highland Park. This is a little bit bigger than the standard Highland Park lot. And then the existing structure was also kind of factored in. But yes, we can look at, maybe there's two options. There's one more of a mid-block urban infill, and then if you have a little bit more area.
And one more thing, if I might share is, I agree with staff that TRN-3 does seem too dense for this area. And I do want to just kind of push all of us, as we're thinking through these cases, to not get back in the habit of zoning through conditions on a regular basis. It's useful occasionally when, when we're in a really tough spot with a really unique situation, but this is a pretty standard urban lot. I don't, I don't see a reason for us to fall back into zoning through conditions on a routine basis. I think that's what got us into a lot of the issues we had with the old zoning code, is that if we're finding ourselves in that spot routinely, I think it means there's a problem with the code, not that there's, you know, not that we need to keep putting conditions on things.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
Alan Jones of Stone Creek Consulting, and thank you. You've hit a lot of my highlights through y'all's discussion with staff. So I did have a neighborhood meeting with Highland Park, and Councilman Elliott was there as well. The neighbor directly adjacent to the site was at the meeting, and the lady across the street as well. So, you know, TRN-1 would be great, except a few, few concerns that both my client has and also that the neighborhood had. The existing building that's in the rear, it's an existing structure. My understanding is the couple that's been living there has been there for 20, maybe 30 years. They've actually survived three or four different ownership changes. And so my client has no intentions of wanting to displace that family, and neither does Councilman Elliott, neither does the neighborhood. Even the lady next door, the first thing she asked me when we got to the meeting was, are my neighbors gonna be staying? And I said, that's our, that's our goal, is so we don't have to displace any neighbors. With the TRN-1, it, you know, we're good with the four units that TRN-1 provides. The concern is that it's the massing, and when we talked with the neighbors, they, they would prefer to see smaller buildings on the site, because the way this was kind of laid out and designed is you got two smaller, single-family homes that front the street, have porches that meets the, you know, meets the character of the neighborhood. And then you kind of look through the two buildings, and you kind of see that additional building in the rear. You know, what they don't want to see is what a lot of, some RN-1-5 zones are getting is just a large house with a bunch of bedrooms that becomes a college rental. That's what they don't want to see. What they want to see is families moving into the town. Like the lady next door, she's got a child that's fairly young, and she loves that. I think the comment was at the end of the street, it's a dead-end alley, or Chamberlain's a dead-end street. And, you know, seven or eight kids usually play at the end of the street, because this is a safe dead-end street. So that, that was, that was a benefit as well. So, you know, having the small, having these individual units is gonna probably bring a clientele that the neighbors were open for. I agree that, you know, doing conditions is not the ideal situation, but, you know, even with a new zoning code, we still see some shortfalls, I think, in some of the zoning that staff and planning commission continues to, to explore. So, you know, with the RN-3 request, it still allows the four units. It allows to keep that back unit in place and allows three additional units to be put on site, but being separated for that single-family feel and look. The two conditions that we discussed at the neighborhood meeting was to have a maximum of four units with three additional units being allowed and the one existing unit to remain. That was, Councilman Elliott's biggest concern was not displacing existing residents. And then the second one would be to match every other residential, you know, scale, condition or zoning code requirements, having a maximum building out of 35 feet just to, to match the rest of it. But the feedback that I had at the meeting was very positive. I think one lady had concern about traffic, but everyone else at the meeting was like, well, they're parking on the rear, and it's a dead-end street, so traffic really shouldn't be too big of a concern. But if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer it. If not, I'll step away.
Any questions for the applicant? All right, we'll hear from the opposition and then give you an opportunity to respond. If you are here in opposition, you wish to speak, coming up to the mic.
Hello, Commissioner. My name's Giovanni Placio. I live directly to the west at 1307 Chamberlain Avenue. My wife was at that meeting previously. My main concern, which I think he addressed previously, was that the residents on the vacant land, as it says, have lived there 20, 30 years. So whatever units here that get added, how is that gonna affect them? And, you know, whatever gets approved, I'd want them to stay, even if it was like a TRN-1. I think the TRN-3 is too intense for that area. I don't know, you know, why they have to have four units. Three plus the one in back, then you have, you know, a minimum of eight to 10 cars, two cars per unit with only four spots in the back, and then you're gonna line up the rest of the street, which already has a bunch of cars on it, which is where all the kids play. Every house has children, and they all play in the front, and it's why we moved to that neighborhood. Chamberlain Avenue is all RN-1-5-3, so that's, I really enjoy the neighborhood for that feel. I'm not opposed to more housing, and if it does get rezoned, it gets rezoned. I just don't want four houses on one lot with so many people, so many transient people. Those are my main concerns. My other concern is my house is butted up against that property. If they're gonna have a five-foot setback, there's a retaining wall that is failing on that wall, and who's gonna pay for that? Is that gonna be me? Is it gonna be a combination of me and the developer? It's just not a cost I was looking to have at this moment. Since my property is lined up, you know, you put a 2,000-square-foot building right on there, what's gonna happen to that retaining wall? Those are my main concerns. I'm not truly opposed to the change, just with limitations, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I am, I really do appreciate the references to the plan. We're new to Chattanooga, not in visiting, but we moved to 1314 Chamberlain Avenue, which is directly across the street from the, the multi-unit residential lot that is referred to. I would like to point out that when you're thinking of Chamberlain Avenue, and I really, we really have a special thought. I've talked to all the neighbors, and they're all very nervous about this proposal, because it is, we do kind of end on the map, it looks like we end at Holt's Claw, which is an A Street and a commercial corridor, but we are a dead-end street. I have videos, I didn't bring, where even our trash trucks have to back into our street to collect the trash and back out. I mean, any more traffic on that street is a real difficult situation. FedEx trucks have to back in. UPS trucks have to back into the street. They literally can't turn around and drive and then back out. I saw that happen this morning. As a new resident, it was interesting to me when I looked at this, and at first I'm like, oh my gosh, that would change the whole character of this street, and I would beg you not to put four units. I practically would beg not to put three or to increase the population of the street. The units that are listed as multi-unit residential were built in 1920, many, many, many years before there was any zoning proposed for that area, and they do not face Chamberlain. So to consider those like a multi-populated lot on Chamberlain is not really accurate, because if you look at them, they're all facing Greenwood. They're beautiful, they're delightful. Two of them even have driveways. They make no traffic impact on our street at all, and they've been there for a very long time. When I went to go look up the plan for the city for Area 3 and try and read about it to figure out, well, what is the plan for my city, and I'm very, very in favor of middle housing and finding ways to do that. And the things that struck me about the plan that I wanted to emphasize for my neighborhood are the fact that the number one request was that we not alter the single-family character of our neighborhoods that exists. And our two blocks that I noted afterwards are UR defined instead of, you know, urban residential, single-family home. It looked like the 1,200 block and the 1,300 block were just urban residential. In spite of the fact that all of the houses on them, except for the four houses that are on a lot but face Greenwood, are all single-family homes that have been there a very long time. Mine may be the longest, because it was built in 1885, and I think is one of the two oldest buildings, houses, or one of the few oldest built, built homes in Chattanooga. Along with the first request for residence and in the plan being that we retain the character, I wanted to cite several of the portions of that housing recommendations in the River to Ridge final plan. One, to preserve and protect existing single-family detached neighborhoods. Number two, to encourage a mix of residential options where appropriate. And I made note that in Section 4.2, that is discussed in a little more detail, where it says, "Residents of the River to Ridge area express a strong desire to preserve the single-family neighborhoods. Most wanted to preserve these single-family residential areas, but they were willing to support multifamily and missing middle housing if it were located around the commercial centers or along commercial corridors." I note that McCallie and Holt's Claw is a designated kind of commercial center, or the goals of our city are to make it that, and it's wonderful. I'm friends with Adam Lutz, who just opened White Duck Taco. And we're really excited about the, the development that will be going along that corridor. But I would also like to note that the exceptions being proposed by a developer also include the properties behind us on Duncan, where they note the corner lot that has been rezoned. I will make a note, that's a wonderful lot and a perfect zoning because it takes on the definition of putting this missing middle housing and multifamily housing in on corridors that already exist, either commercial corridors, or I think the McCallie Avenue is called an urban corridor, where you have McCallie and Main Street. It, it goes there and let me see, I had those businesses can be buffered from single family homes or the other middle housing, I think would fall in this. It says it right here in, I believe it's in chapter six and under 6.3, a comment on missing middle housing in centers. Transitions between residential and commercial residents of single family homes. We usually do not want to live right next door to the types of commercial uses found in centers. However, those can be, businesses can be buffered from single family homes with other traditional uses. This is where the missing middle housing can play an important role. I think the fuzzy area to me is that we're zoned on our two blocks as urban residential in spite of the fact that they're already established, single family homes, exactly the same as most of, of Chamberlain for the rest of the street. You know, the little hashtags on the map versus the solid brown. Lastly, I would love to kind of go to the chapter that comes before chapter seven, where we define that urban residential housing.
Ma'am, ma'am, sorry to interrupt, but you're out of, you're out of, no, I'm right here.
But if you could note just the discussion.
Can you state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, it's 1314 Chamberlain Avenue.
And your name?
Maria Copeland.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Just a few quick comments, you know, in a, in a, kind of address the, the concern about the neighbors that currently live in that back unit. That's, that's a, that's a desire for my client to be able to keep that existing house rentable and letting that family stay because they've been there for, you know, like I mentioned earlier, over 20 years. So, you know, it's, it's either leave this as RN one five and build a large house in the front and leave that as an ADU in the rear, or looking at this rezon option that we're discussing. You know, I don't think the number of units is in question between my recommend, or my request and what staff is recommending. Still, still four units, the, the discussion is, is, is it a, a larger mass of a building that's appropriate? Or is it three smaller, single family looking homes that's more appropriate? This, this is a, maybe, you know, maybe not unique, but it's, it's, as I think staff mentioned, it's one and a half lots. This used to be, this one and the, and the property off of Greenwood used to be three separate lots. At some point in the past, it was subdivided and just a two separate lots. So it's 74 feet wide. So it is a larger, single family lot that you would typically see in that 50 foot wide lot in Highland Park. One thing that, you know, that I continue to hear from the Highland Park community, as I've worked in that community for, for quite a while, is they, they like the diverse of housing options. They like a diverse of people. And I think this continues to kind of provide that, that option for, for Highland Park. And then as for regarding the, you know, some of the issues regarding retaining walls and things like that, we haven't gotten into design yet, but once we get into the design, we'll be working with the neighbors and working with the LDO as we go through permitting processes.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
How large is that existing house? Do you know square footage?
Five or six hundred square feet. It's not large.
Okay, so it could be an ADU.
It would, yeah, if, if this was to not go to the rezoning, probably a larger, single family house would be built and that would be left as an ADU, correct?
Mr. Lyle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I think this is a, a really great conversation. I, I, for a number of years, I lived on the 1500 block of Chamberlain. Love, love this part of town. And I know the, I know the street extremely well. I, I also, and one of the only ones, you know, I was chairman of the board at Chattanooga Neighborhood Enterprise and we went through the excruciating pain of building a cottage court over and not too very far from this. And I can tell you from person, from experience to that, that there is almost no zoning. And, and I'm glad that we are moving in that direction, but it still, it just still feels like this is a difficult typology to introduce. I feel like the conversations, you know, also again, you know, as chairman of the board at Chattanooga Neighborhood Enterprise, there, there is still consternation if you're doing a quadplex that looks like the, the massing and scale of a house. You know, it kind of feels like this, that sometimes some of these solutions, which, which are great, it doesn't seem like which version of the egg we crack, we still run into it being problematic. I, I, I like this version a lot because I think in response to some of the criticisms, criticisms that we receive for things like quadruplexes that, that look like a large, single family dwelling, where maybe single family resident homeowners in the area are upset about renters coming in. I personally, I don't, you know, I've rented, I don't see any problem with renters. But it, but it, but it feels like that becomes the lightning rod. Here in this instance, it, it kind of feels like smaller houses. But I, I personally think this is a great solution as you see infill lots increase in their value, a way to continue to bring housing affordability and, and create those, those places and opportunities for homeownership that we want to see throughout our community. This is a really great way of, of doing that. And I, and kudos to you guys and your client for trying to ensure that the, the existing neighbors are, are, are staying put where they are. I mean, you know, I would like to move for an approval of what Mr. Jones has submitted. But with the conditions that they have also submitted, you know, I know that we want to be very careful and cognizant of precedent, but until we get cottage court dialed into something that's not, you know, with the 3,000 square feet open space, you know, some of the, some of the mechanisms in the setbacks, some of the mechanisms in it, it just feel a little bit prohibitive until we get that dialed in. You know, we may just have to do a couple of things with conditions and to, to, to get the, you know, I think once we see that, see it in action, I, I think this will have a lot less of the, the visual impact that people are worrying about. I think this would make a really great opportunity. But, but anyway, that's, I, I'm going to make the motion and, and see where that goes. So I'd move to approve what's submitted with conditions as submitted.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And it has been seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Bird?
Just one quick question. Has there been any thought into subdividing this into two lots and doing RN one three? Two main units, two ADUs, one of those being the existing.
I mean, you're still at four units.
You're still at four units, exactly. No, I'm just thinking through the typology. I'm thinking how it looks from the street. I'm thinking, it is interesting. Mr. Lyle alluded to this, the idea that we think about missing middle and we think about these quadruplexes that blend into the neighborhood. And that sounds like a great idea, but often it gets a lot of pushback because now you've got, you know, a multifamily unit and people are worried about that for whatever reason.
The, the only issue, because we did look at the RN one three as an option. The, the only potential concern was with that existing structure that's already there. You would have to quote unquote self park on your own lot from a permitting standpoint. Could we get some variances through that possibly? But that was just one of the hurdles was having to self park on your own lot for the, for the parking requirements.
Okay, just want to ask a question.
Yeah, good question.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Vice Chair, Chris Anderson.
Thank you, Chairman. Next case is case 2025 dash 0168, Thousand Hills Management, 1300 and 1335 Mercer Street. Is the applicant present? Is there opposition present? There we go. This is the one. Brian, let's do a staff report on it.
Sure. This is case 2025, 168. This is a request to rezon from RN one six. Residential neighborhood zone and IH industrial heavy, heavy industrial zone to RN one three. Residential neighborhood zone, proposed uses are single unit detached residential. It's roughly 3.13 acres in size. Number of units proposed are 36. That's a density roughly 11.5 million square acre. There's been some history on this property going back to 2018 and 2019. The rezon the size from R1 and M1 to RTZ at the time. These applications were withdrawn. Staff at that time did have a recommendation to deny those requests back in 2018 and 2019. This is vacant piece of property. Everything abutting this property to the north, west and east is single unit. And to the south is vacant piece of property. I believe it's owned by the city of Chattanooga and you go further south, that's, the Riverton development being under construction, a larger lot development. Here's a view of the site from Mercer Street. I know the view of the site from Mercer Street. This is a view from Whitney Street looking towards Mercer Street to the top of the picture. This is Mercer back here. North of the site, single family dwellings. This is south of site. This is the Riverton that's being developed now with more of the estate type lots. This is east of the site. West of the site, single family dwellings. This is Mercer Street and the site's on the right hand side. This is Whitney Street, just showing you examples of single family dwellings. This property is in the Hickson North River Plan adopted in 2005. That plan recommended low density residential with the primary uses being single family detached dwellings. Here's a close, a closer view of that place type recommendation. Here's a site plan submitted with a request. The primary use in the area is single unit detached residential, as evident from the aerial map. The proposed uses are more compatible with existing residential neighborhood than the existing vacant industrial use in a vacant zone that's in zone industrial. The site is surrounded primarily by RN one six zoning. A portion of the site is zoned IH, which is not compatible with adjacent residential zoning. So changing the zone to residential zone is more compatible with adjacent zoning in the neighborhood. The 2005 Hickson North River Plan recommends low density residential. The request for smaller lots, single unit detached homes, this compatible land use plan goes. Many of the single unit detached dwellings in the area are historic lots of record with varying lot widths and setbacks, some of which are non-conforming with the current RN one six zoning regulations. For example, here's Mercer Street and here's the site. Most of these homes right through here are roughly 3,400 square feet to 5,000 square feet, which is in line with the developers requesting. If you zoom in, you can see the setbacks are roughly zero on some of these homes. There's some as large as 66 feet for the rear. If you go up here on Whitney, these are much larger lots. You can see they will have larger setbacks, but primarily these on Mercer Street are very small lots. Another example, here's the site itself on Whitney. The property sizes in this range from 3,000 to 4,000 square feet. There are larger lots south of site and other areas of Leuken City neighborhood, but just pointing these out where they're abutting this property. So staff recommends to approve this request. As I stated earlier, we did have several requests in this property and staff has recommended in the past to deny those requests. But that was a RTZ zone. We have new zones in place. Looking at the adjacent lot sizes, this proposed use would be very similar to what's in the current area today on Mercer Street. So staff recommends to approve. I ask any questions y'all may have.
Any questions for staff? All right, we'll hear from the applicant.
Great, thank you. My name is Rick Wood and we're Collier Construction. And I represent, I, I, we are the applicant on this project. The, the, the reason for the zone, the rezoning request is to go from manufacturing and our, our six to our three. And it allows us to put lots on that, that linear, well, all of it primarily, but that linear primarily lots that meet the 3,000 square foot requirement, meet all the setback requirements and all the side setback requirements. We did meet with the neighborhood on October 28th, I believe it was, and had a, had a good meeting with them and talked and, and listened to their concerns. One concern was about traffic. I think, and I, I don't want to speak for the neighborhood, but what we heard and we took into account was traffic concerns, density concerns, as well as wanting to keep the northwest pedestrian connector from Whitney to Mercer. And so that connector, we are committed to keep that connector. We don't know exactly where it's going to go yet because there's a lot of work to be done on that site, but we are committed to keep that, that connection is really important to the neighborhood. It's important to us. On the density side of things, the, the 3,000 square foot lots is what we feel makes for a good density opportunity, young families to come in. It allows us to work with the topo and the grades that are there so that the houses fit with the topo and the grade because it slopes down from Mercer down to the vacant lot or down to the new park. And as far as traffic goes, we are, we're also able to work with that same topo and have rear loaded garages. So we're not going to have driveway cuts on Mercer, but have rear loaded entry off of, off of the alley, off of the back. So those are the biggest concerns that we heard and obviously I don't want to speak for the neighborhood, but we, we think it's a good opportunity. We think it's a great, a great place for young family, families to experience Leuken City because it is such a great, it is a great neighborhood. And then finally, for density, there's just a lot of existing infrastructure that's already there based on your work, planning commission, based on the city of Chattanooga work. There's park spaces, there's sewer, there's roads. Hickson Pike is point five miles away. River, Rivermont Park is point two five away. So there's a lot of things already happening in the neighborhood, which makes it a great neighborhood. Do you have anything to add, Rocky and Martin, last minute?
Rocky Chambers, Chattanooga Engineering Group, 400 East Main Street. I think Rick, Rick hit all the highlights there. These are, these are lots that are similar, different shapes, but very similar in the density of the lots that are across the street from us and a good transition between here and the, the Riverton development as well. Glad we were able to come up with a plan that kept, you know, curb cuts to a minimum here. And we feel like it's, it's conforming with the surrounding neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any question for the applicant? Why don't you guys sit down? Opposition, come on up. And Brian, we had a few emails about this one as well, didn't we?
We did. I think it should be in your Google sheet in front of you too.
Can you offer a synopsis of what those issues were?
Let me get it real quick here.
Those views are represented here today?
68. Concerns with density and building height, on-street parking with the width of Mercer, Mercer Street. One of them just says, you do not support the rezoning, but it seems to be primarily the density and lot size and traffic.
The height's not any taller than what they could do now, right?
Known as IH, unlimited height and IH.
Okay. But the RN one three and RN one six, do they have the same height maximum?
Yes, 35 feet.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're ready for opposition. Mark, please state your name.
Mark Mullins, I'm representing the Neighborhood Association in Leuken City. I don't know what to do with this, but I have a petition with a lot of names on it opposing this. What was not mentioned, I, I've, I've got something to read because I'm not an auditor. But what was not mentioned and will be mentioned again is the historical, uh, history, the history of this neighborhood. It's a mill town. It's a village. And I want to make sure that's, that's pretty clear. And the neighborhood is not opposed to rezoning. They're opposed to RN one three. We're okay with RN one six. Now, they want to put 26 houses. I don't know if that's possible, but I guess they, it is. Let me just, this is the third proposal for this same 3.2 acre site. The 2018 and 2019 applications were both opposed by the neighborhood and recommended for partial denial by your staff. In both of those cases, the staff found that the smaller interior lots between Mercer and Whitney Street were inconsistent with the established neighborhood form and lot frontages. The staff, the smaller, here's what the staff said. The smaller lots proposed between Whitney and Mercer would not be appropriate since they would not be consistent with lot frontages found along the surrounding blocks. since they would not be consistent with lot frontages found along the surrounding blocks. To me, that conclusion remains the same today. And I'll skip through some of this stuff. Number one, inconsistent with the existing neighborhood pattern. And of course, the, what's across the street to the south, southeast is where the old mill used to be. And behind it is the new Leupton Meadows, Leupton Mill Meadows Park, which was not mentioned by the developers. And they haven't resolved the problem we're having with the sidewalk. Remember, this is a mill town. So they, they woke up in the morning, put on their clothes and walked to work. Then they can go back to the general store or they can go down to the post office. It's a very historic mill area of town. And they've got the park behind it. They call it the native grass, well, it's a native grass park that's not fully developed yet, but it will be. And of course, this construction along Mercer will completely block everybody's view. But we're still okay with RN 16. They'll have real rear vehicle access, but any visitors will be parking on Mercer. And then their trash cans. Right now on Mercer Street, their trash cans have to be left on Mercer Street. I'm going to assume that will be true of the new development. So you have two, on a small street, you have trash can, I mean, two cars will not be able to pass each other. Okay, in short, the request before you represents a more intense version of two proposals that were already found incompatible with our neighborhood pattern. The planning staff's change in position is not supported by any real change in the area's built form or community vision. There is no, and you can correct me, staff, but there is no RN 13. Well, there is at, off Birmingham, but that's nowhere near this location. And assigning the address of 1547 Mercer has no, is nowhere near her development and this. This is Mercer Street. I don't know where they got Mercer over there, but, so that's why I was standing up in opposition. The proposed zoning for case. Where he covered that? Okay, both cases were proposed by the neighborhood and received staff recommendations for denial. The only change since then has been a creation of a new park and a new zoning label, not a change in the neighborhood's form. We asked the commission and council to uphold the principles of consistency, connectivity, and respect for the community character by denying case 2025-168. So at least we need to work on between Collier Construction and what we want. But we do, we are strictly opposed to RN 13. The infrastructure, let me, this community was built in 1920s. They don't even know where the sewer is. They don't know for a lot of these houses. They were able, not able to tell me where they're going to connect to the sewer. So there's a lot of unknowns. So if nothing else, if you can't maybe defer this so we can have further discussions. That's just too many houses for this small area. And remember that was IH is, used to be manufacturing one. So we don't want that anymore, but we don't want RN 13. No, RN, yeah, 13. We're okay with RN 16. Any questions?
Any questions for the opposition from commissioners? All right, seeing none.
I do have one question.
Nathan, thank you.
So you're mentioning visitors parking on the street, trash cans out on the street. I'm just curious, is that really any different than what's already going on on Whitney and Crompton? Those don't seem to be significantly larger streets. Are there issues on Whitney and Crompton with trash cans and visitor parking?
Yes, that is true what's going on, but it's not a thorough fair. That Mercer is a cut through from North Access Road to Hickson Pike. And especially during rush hour, but it's a cut through all day. There's a lot more traffic. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bird. Any other questions for the opposition? All right, thank you, Mark. We have two minutes for applicant rebuttal. If you'd like to come up.
Thank you, Mark, for your comments. I don't have a lot to say except, you know, the visitor parking and trash cans. I think that, you know, if, if nothing else, I mean, we're probably not going to regulate, regulate where, where visitors park. We haven't, we're not that far along in our design, but exactly providing where trash cans go and exactly where visitors park at this point in time. There is, we do know the, the right of way there, the width is 31 feet, so there should be, there should be room. We also know those things kind of slow down traffic sometimes when there's things like that on the street. You know, the, the zoning of industrial is there currently. And so the majority of this development is, it is a down zone. It is to residential. And we, we stand by that of being, of a, of an RN 13 being in that, in that neighborhood. In the past, it was an RTZ request, which was smaller and tighter, a smaller and tighter development and smaller and tighter lots. As far as infrastructure goes, Mark's right. We don't know exactly where everything is today. We don't know exactly where every single stormwater and every single sewer line is. And we're not sure exactly how old they are. They're probably pretty old. But believe me, it, it, it bodes well for, you know, we, we want to make sure we know exactly where the storm is and exactly where the sewer is before we go any further. So that's, you know, before we go and spend tens and thousands of dollars on, on engineering, you know, or developing, we're going to make sure we know those, that infrastructure's in place. We're going to know that infrastructure's in, in good working condition for the city.
Yeah, I think, again, covered pretty well. Just one point of clarification. We, we actually have more than 30 foot of actual pavement in front of this property on Mercer Street. So a very wide street. We don't currently have plans on adding parallel parking along that street, but it is one of the wider streets in the city. And, and as, as Rick mentioned there, it is a pretty significant down zone from a zone that, that allows something like, well, that's the same zone as Volkswagen down to single family residential and certainly much more conforming with the neighborhood than the current zone.
Questions?
All right, thank you very much. Councilwoman Burris, question for the applicant.
Yeah, hey, Rick. Have you all spoken with the city council representative about this project?
We have, yes.
Okay, and what was, is it, is it Jenny Hill or is it, is it Jenny? Okay. What was her feedback about the project?
She, she was, she wished us well for this meeting, but she wasn't saying, she did not say, I hope it all passes and great. She's, I think she's kind of, kind of holding, holding her line there. She had made it clear. We toured her, toured her around a couple of houses and developments that we've done in the past so that she can see our quality of work and she was supportive of more housing.
Okay, thank you.
A question for staff. I'm, I'm curious, could y'all walk me through the history of how this neighborhood got zoned, equivalency zoned into RN 16 when clearly, I don't think any of these houses could be built in RN 1, these existing houses could be built in RN 16 right now. These are all fourth. It was just automatically zoned in. Because if you're doing an actual equivalency of what is there now.
We didn't have that time to do that level detail.
Right.
We just did in and out of the urban overlay was.
Right, it was an automatic kind of checklist thing. It seems to me like if you were to build this same neighborhood today, it would be RN 13 across the board. There might be a couple RN 15 lots, but I know it is, RN 13 is inconsistent with the zoning technically directly to the north. Like it's RN 16 to RN 13, but if you look at the actual built form and the character of the neighborhood, RN 13 does seem like a pretty good match. So that makes sense. It was just kind of a, an automatic switch rather than a, you know, deep dive into why this was done. Thank you.
Commissioner Payne?
Yeah, I was just going to say a couple of things in terms of turning it down in 18 and 19. And the difference in my mind is there's a housing crisis now that didn't exist in 2018 and 2019. And I'd also say in, in terms of keeping with the neighborhood, sometimes it's more than just the structure. The very fact that this was a mill town, well, this is housing for working people. And in my mind, that's what we're missing. And this is trying to get as many houses as we can for people who go to work every day would be in solid keeping with what this was originally. And from my mind, I'm for it and everywhere we can get it. Obviously keeping, you know, an eye towards the housing and trying to do, be true to the neighbors that are there now. But I mean, the truth is, we're in crisis mode. Nobody likes to develop, nobody likes change, but the fact of the matter is, young people can't get houses. And we need to address it every chance we get, in my mind.
Mark, this, the time for opposition has passed. It's, it's the applicant and now it's the commission's time to ask questions. If they have a question for you, they'll ask one. Mr. Lyle?
Thanks, sir. You had, you, you had mentioned that retaining the pedestrian connection from Whitney to Mercer was a priority. So is the, the, the plan, you know, we, we approve zoning, not plans typically. Are, are you guys going to go back and revise the, what the plan to accommodate that pedestrian connection from, from Whitney to Mercer?
Yes, we will, we will. We don't know exactly where it's going to go because we do know there's some stormwater work to be done on that upper section. And there's topo, as you can see in the, in the photo. So we don't know exactly where that pedestrian connection is going to go, but we know what's going to happen.
I, I think the only, the only thing that I would say is, when looking at the kind of overall plan of the existing, you know, fabric there and with the thought of this park coming into play where the, where the previous, you know, industrial buildings were, you know, it may be, it may be worth studying if it, if it works out to also extend that through this, this line of development to kind of create that, you know, centralized, you know, so that anybody who does then come, is on their way there would have, wouldn't have to kind of stop and go, you know, on that big circuitous mission that that could kind of help, you know, knit the whole thing together, not to use a, you know, knitting analogy.
Thank you, Chairman. I know situations are fluctuating, everything's fluid. You, and we talked about affordable housing. Do you have any idea of the approximate cost of these units?
I really don't at this point. I don't really want to go on record either right now.
Not even ballpark.
Mainly because in eight to 12 months from now, when the house goes on, when the first house hits the market, let's say 12 months from now, we just don't know where we're going to be. I don't know my site, my site costs yet. I don't know how old that sewer line is. So I, I just want to, I would rather, I would rather not say.
If it was built right now, would you have any idea what it would, the cost would be? And I realize that it'll change in a year.
Yeah, yeah. Our goal is to be in that, in that 350 to 415 range. That's the goal.
350 to 415, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? What's the will of the commission?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve that's been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you.
And this will move on to city council next month. I encourage you to reach out to your council representative and I encourage the applicant to do that as well. And now I'll hand it back over to the chairman.
Thank you. Next case on the agenda is item 11. It's case 2025-0169, and this is located at 4272 Bonnie Oaks Drive. Staff has recommended to deny an applicant's request to rezone from RN 1-6 and CC to IH heavy industrial. Is there any opposition present?
Mr. Chairman, we did receive one email on opposition.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Price, MAP Engineering, did you want staff to do their presentation before we started or?
Sure. This 2025-169, this is a request to rezone from RN 16 and CC, commercial zone to IH using with conditions. Proposed uses landscape and construction supply, storage and sales, 2.62 acres in size. Conditions supplied by the applicant are hours of operation to be limited between 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM. Allowed uses within the proposed IH zone are to be limited to light and general industrial, offices, outdoor storage yards, and/or places of worship. There's no recent zoning history for this site. You see abutting this property is CC and RN 16. To the north across Bonnie Oaks, you do see IH. And 2019, to the northwest of this site, there was a request rezone from C2 and R1 to M1. Staff recommended to deny that request. Ended up, planning commission recommended to deny and approved C2. City council ultimately denied the request. Jacy uses a railroad and vacant property to the west, to the north across Bonnie Oaks is industrial uses. To the north of this site, on the same side of Bonnie Oaks, this property is commercial. And to the south and east is single unit residential. There are some slope, slopes on the property, which is indicated by this red, which is steeper slopes above 35%. So there are some slope challenges on the property. Here's a view of the site, which is, I believe this is in the existing CC zone portion. Another view of the site. This is north of the site across Bonnie Oaks. This is east of the site along Bonnie Oaks, some of the commercial uses. Same here, this is west of the site along Bonnie Oaks. This is in the Highway 58 land use plan, which is adopted in 2002. The place type or land use plan at that time recommended neighborhood commercial for the property abutting Bonnie Oaks and low density residential. Ignore that little red circle. That was a focus area in the plan. We're talking, I believe it's right through here. I have a closer view of that. Here's the zoomed in view of Highway 58. Again, it recommends business, I mean, community commercial along Bonnie Oaks and low density residential for the back portion. Here's a view of the site plan submitted with a request. The northern portion of the site along Bonnie Oaks Drive is surrounded by commercial and industrial uses. The southern portion of the site where the applicant has requested to rezone to IH is surrounded by the railroad and single detached residential land uses. There's no IH zone property adjacent to this site. The site is surrounded by commercial and RN 16. Interesting note, the applicant proposed uses of light and general industrial, office and outdoor storage and places of churches are allowed in both IL and IH zones except for general industrial uses, which are only allowed in IH zone. It's important to note that general industrial uses are, as defined in the zoning code is the manufacturing, fabrication, processing, reduction, and/or the destruction of any substance or commodity or any treatment thereof in such a manner as to change the form, character, and appearance and incidental storage, sales, and distribution of products. General industrial uses may produce noise, vibrations, illumination, and in particular, that is perceptible to the adjacent land users. These industrial uses are typically have outdoor storage areas. So that's one of the proposed uses that the applicants. Uh, these industrial uses are typically have outdoor storage areas, so that's one of the proposed uses that the applicants uh requesting to be used. Uh, the two thousand two highway fifty eight plan recommends again um commercial for the northern portion of the site and low density residential for the southern portion. Uh, the applicant did provide pictures and and a video. I'll try to play the video. Mike's getting very technical on me with these videos now. But uh this is a picture that was supplied by the applicant. Another view. Another view of the site. Another view of the site. I think this is looking towards the RN one six portion of the site. And let's see if I can play this.
And as you listen to the video, if I might, see if you can hear anything that's abnormal.
Well, maybe the play didn't work. Mike, I can't get it to play here.
Okay.
It's about a thirty second clip, right? Yeah.
Brian, have you heard it?
I did not hear my volume turned up. So if it had any sound, I didn't hear anything, but I didn't have my volume turned up either, so.
I've got it on my phone if you want me to play it that way. No, I won't be doing that.
Yeah, I tried it several times. I can't get it.
That's fine. Are you through, Brian, or do?
I'm through, but we we recommended to deny this request.
Mike Price, MAP Engineers. So um I do have a pass outs of information that you have there, which shows an aerial view of the site. This operation has been taking place since nineteen ninety seven on this property when it was owned by McDaniel and Sons. And what they basically used it for was uh construction lay down yard. It is currently owned by Groundsapes. They've owned it for the last three years, and what they use it for is. As the pictures indicated, areas where they uh have mulch or gravel, um topsoil, and they simply utilize that as part of their operation. That they then go out and uh utilize either on sites or sometimes have customers that come to the property to buy it. Uh, on the handout, you will see the distances as it is currently from any of the residences around the area there off of Chickamauga Avenue. And it is at least four hundred feet from the back of every single house to where the operation at the closest point could occur. So this is a long distance away, and again, has been in operation for some twenty eight years. So this is not introducing something new. This is simply continuing with what has been taking place uh for quite a long time. The condition is just for this use only, so we're not proposing to introduce any sort of other uses. But simply continue to use it as a lay down uh yard for materials to be brought in and out of sight. As it relates to Groundsapes operation and or customers that would be coming in and buying topsoil or gravel, whatever the case uh might be. Uh, I would point out that this site is really not suitable for a commercial use. And it's really not suitable for residential use, because you can't see it from Bonnie Oaks. Driving down through there, you'll never notice it, because it sits behind a convenience store. There's some other commercial buildings in the area, and the access swings between those buildings and then dives behind the uh area through there. Um, so we also reached out to every neighbor, and you'll see uh that there are three neighbors. That adjoin this property, and uh Mr. Newman with Groundsapes is gonna come up here. He is gonna tell you the conversations that he had with all three neighbors, but basically suffice it to say they're all in support, have no opposition to what is being proposed.
Good afternoon. Uh, Todd Newman, Groundscape Concepts. Uh, I did uh get a chance to visit with the uh the neighbors last week. Uh, I was able to reach Ms. Yen Benz uh by phone. She owns the property from um from uh that that's adjacent to us on Bonnie Oaks Drive. Up Chickamauga Avenue uh to see if I can get you the the address. Uh, forty nine twenty five. Uh, so from Bonnie Oaks up to forty nine twenty five. She said she had no uh no opposition to any zoning changes that we would have done on our property. Uh, next I went to um. Uh, Ms. Uh, Lachandra Lanston. Uh, she is located at um forty thirty nine thirty one Chickamauga Avenue. And uh we I had a nice visit with her. She said as long as we were doing the work on our property, she had no opposition to anything being done uh on our property. And then the the third person I visited with who uh submitted a uh opposition by email, uh Mr. William Phillips. Uh, he was uh I had a really good visit with him. We walked through the woods. We walked all over his property and my property. Uh, we're we're best friends now, I think. We spent about an hour together uh Friday afternoon. But he uh he had a misunderstanding of what we were gonna. He thought we were manufacturing uh on the property. And he was opposed to that, and he 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 stated that he would rescind his opposition, and I asked him if he could do that through the. System, and he he said he would check on that, but he was welcome to a phone call. Uh, he would be happy to call in and and share his his thoughts. Those are the three property owners that border us, and I did spend some time with them last week, and uh they had no opposition to uh to our zoning changes. Thank you.
So given the fact that we've reached out to the neighbors and no one has opposition at this point, and it is continuation of an existing use. Uh, that has been going for quite a while. And again, I do have the video. I can play it on my on my phone for you. But suffice it to say, at nine AM, I was out there. I had them to do a normal operation. So they're backing dump trucks, they're moving skid steers. You hear the ma- machines as they are uh backing up. Is it working now?
It's playing, but I don't hear any audio. It's seems to be playing.
It was that silent when I was out there.
Okay.
So uh. So it uh you can barely hear the noise when a machine is backing up essentially. And actually, you heard far more noise. I did it at nine o'clock, not at a seven thirty or eight o'clock or six o'clock in the evening when Bonnie Oaks is at its busiest. All the noise that I was really getting was from Bonnie Oaks. It wasn't from this site. Uh, that was taken last week. We've obviously had a lot of leaves that have uh fallen off by the time that this picture was taken. But there's a lot of uh evergreens that are in this area, and again, we will supplement this with plantings uh that will be a thirty foot buffer uh through the area. That we would be uh planting, and you can see there on the screen some of the existing vegetation that you've got in there now. So again, I think that given the use, history, neighbors, all of that, we've. Have an operation that we're just simply wanting to expand out, continue uh that's that's been in operation for a long time. Uh, so with that, if there's any questions, happy to answer those.
I got one. Mr. Payne?
This has been operating for twenty nine years?
Uh, since ninety seven.
What what? Why are we bringing it to zoning? What 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 brought the zoning change now?
Because we wanted to expand the footprint to go further back to the south over where our current operation is.
Any other questions for the applicant? Do you want to make a motion? We have a motion to approve, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion?
For sure. Was that with conditions the applicant supplied?
Yes, please.
So we have a motion to approve, and it has been properly seconded, and this was for um a a motion to approve with conditions.
Just have one one more question. What what are the conditions?
Hours of operation and to this use only, I believe.
Yeah, on the screen, it's hours of operation to be limited between seven AM and six PM, and then allowed. Uses in the proposed IH zone are to be limited to light and general industrial offices, outdoor storage yards, and places of worship.
Can we also add the screening? You mentioned that, but I don't see it as a condition.
We're happy to add that. It it is a requirement when you do the development, get the land service permit, but we're happy to add that as a condition as well. Per like the attached site plan or something like that, if you'd like, or?
Yep. I would.
All right. We have an amended motion to approve with conditions. All in favor? Discussion.
I just had I I just had a quick question. Um, in the second condition, you have places of worship.
I don't know why that's in there, to be perfectly honest. If you want to strike that, I'm good with that too.
No, I have no problem with it. I just.
This is a very religious group. They pray over every topsoil of.
I was gonna ask you if you're worshiping the gravel or what, so anyway.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next case on our agenda is item twelve. It's case twenty twenty five dash zero one se- seven zero. And it's located at eighty five ninety five Hilltop Drive. It's to amend conditions. Staff has recommended to approve other. Is the applicant present? Mr. Price?
And Mr. Chairman, we did receive one email in opposition to this.
And uh, Mr. Price, are you okay with the staff recommendation? Okay, is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve, and it has been seconded. And that is the staff recommendation. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen is a mandatory referral. It's case twenty twenty five dash zero one seven one. And it's for a right of way closure at the eighteen hundred block of East Twenty First Street. Staff has recommended to deny the applicant's request. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present? All right, Mr. Schultz.
Yeah, this is a request uh to abandon a right of way uh to consolidate the property. You can see it's currently zoned IH. It's an eighteen hundred block at East Twenty First Street. It's all industrial through here. This is the uh I believe this is the former Bojangles sitting here, and this is all industrial uses through here. And that yeah, placing yellows with the applicant wishes to abandon this right of right of way to combine these two properties. Here's a view of the site. Here's a site plan submitted to abandon this portion of the right of way only. Uh, this right of way does provide a possible north-south alley connection. Um, and there are utilities present in this right of way. EPB would like to retain an eight foot wide power and communication easement along the existing power line. Within the alleyway, uh, the applicant, when we discuss this, uh, transportation uh division provided uh some uh guidance. That the advocate can apply for temporary use permit to construct a fence or store any equipment in the right of way, but that still keeps the right of way open in case it's ever needed in the future. Uh, this right of way is also needed uh for utility easements, and it's also provides rear alley access to five abutting properties. So staff recommends uh to deny this request, and you can see on this site plan where it would provide connection for rear alley access to some of the budding properties.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Yes, sir.
I'm working with um Charlie Hunter, who owns several properties around here, but he owns the two on either side of the requested area that we're gonna be abandoning. Or would like to request to be abandoned. The uh the alley right now is there's for the Bojangles, there is a building already in the middle of the alley. There is a EPB power pole uh on twenty third street that sits in the middle of the alley. And then as the EPB line goes to the north, it veers over to the right side, so we don't have a problem uh leaving ten feet. I think they you said they wanted eight feet, but the alley is a ten foot wide. Strip, and we would we would leave that as an easement, but it would combine, we could consolidate his two lots, the one on either side of the yellow. Um, area there, uh, combine the, and you can see where he's improved the the parking lot so far on the business on the right. He just recently purchased the um, the I guess trailer yard, you want to call it, uh gravel area to the to the to the west. And he would like to put both parking lots together and then uh create one one lot there.
What why 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 do you need to abandon the alley in order to um to do that?
And 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 we can go to the temporary use permit. I mean, it was something we were gonna. If we couldn't get the alley closed, that we can use, because he does not want to, you know, we're not building across it. It's gonna be maintained as an alley. I mean, as a uh right of way for utilities. Uh, so it's just part of the parking. He wants to build a fence around it. Uh, temporary use permit, you know, is temporary. I mean, it kind of scared him a little bit. He wanted to be able to put a fence, invest some money in this, clean it all up. Uh, there's uh some people that have been living in the alley that's been cleaned out. Uh, it's just several reasons he wants to make it a permanent. Fix to his to his property.
Does temporary use permit allow him to put a fence and a gate and all that as long as they have that EPB has access? So he could, in essence, do everything he's talking about doing. If you're not gonna build across it.
Yes, you you couldn't put any permanent structure there, but you can put a fence, gravel it, pave it, whatever you want to do.
Everything he's talking about.
I think so. That's what our transportation department or division was going the route of um temporary use route.
Roger, I I'll just say that we've done a lot of redevelopment of post-industrial sites, and uh I would imagine at some point. The reality will be this will be redeveloped, and when it is, those alleys can make or break higher density developments. And so, you know, we've we've just seen that we've had to rely very heavily on that existing alley network. And um especially, obviously, for the current industrial use, it isn't necessary. And fortunately, for us, in a lot of the projects we've done, those alleys had not been abandoned, and they were still there, and we could, you know. Put those to use, so um I can I can understand where staff is coming from, where today's use, it may not. Be needed, but it won't be industrial forever. I'm sure of that. There will be somebody, somebody like. I might come along in twenty years and be willing to pay enough to, you know, put houses there, and we need that alley, so I can see where staff's coming from.
If the permit's granted.
Who grants that permit?
Uh, transportation.
Well, now that that could, that could be a problem. I hate that. I can see why you would have some concerns about that.
Make the motion. To follow staff's recommendation of denial, letting go of the temporary permit.
If we deny this, we do have a motion on the floor. If we deny this, um, is there anything stopping them from coming back? At at some future date?
No, only at council level. If council uh denies it, I believe it's nine months. He can draw it at council level.
Withdraw it and then or 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 if we deferred it for some number of months.
Uh, since it's AMR, he would have to ask for deferral.
Gotcha, yeah. Just to, it would be ideal to have already found out whether or not transportation's gonna give them a um.
Well, they were supportive of the staff. That's where it came from. That doesn't, you know, they're the ones that come up with the temporary use recommendation.
Okay. So we do have a um motion uh to deny. Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion?
I'm I'm happy to second that. I I I will say I I I like what you are trying to do here. I I appreciate appreciate the effort there. I just I think that there is looks like there's a better way to probably go about it. If uh if that does not work out, I think at least I personally would be be open to revisiting that in the future. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, maybe the applicant can get with transportation um because that'll as soon as they can, because the they're the ones who put it on the council agenda. And it could be it gets resolved prior to the need for that to happen.
Thank you, Karen. Next case on our agenda is case twenty twenty five dash zero one seven two, and this is located at nineteen sixteen and nineteen thirty two. Central Avenue and parts of twenty two sixteen Rossville Boulevard. Staff has recommended to approve an applicant's request to rezone from IH to CMU one. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present? Okay. What's the will of the commission?
To approve.
We have a motion to approve, and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fifteen on our agenda is case twenty twenty five dash zero one seven three, and this is located. At a number of addresses, forty five seventy one to forty seven forty seven eleven Ravinia Lane. And uh staff has recommended to approve and applicants to request to rezone from CC and CMU one. And um TRN three. To RN one dash three. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present? What's the will of the commission? We have a motion to approve, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item sixteen on our agenda is mandatory referral twenty twenty five dash zero one seven five, and this is. A request for right of way closure and abandonment. Staff. And this is a request for a right-of-way closure and abandonment, staff has recommended approval. It's located in the three-hundred block of Stringer Street. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve and it has been properly seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item one under government mandatory referrals is twenty-two-five dash zero one five-eight. And this is for a property acquisition, staff has recommended to approve, it's located at thirteen twenty-six North Moore Road. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And case twenty-two-five dash zero one five-nine, located at twenty-twenty Cornelsen Road. Staff has recommended to approve a mandatory referral for a declared surplus. Any opposition present? We have a motion to approve and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright. Item one under resolutions and amendments, Mr. Schultz?
Sure, these, there's a lot in that caption there, but these are staff-initiated changes where we meet every week with the Land Development Office to talk about, uh, updates to potential zoning codes. So these are some of those staff-initiated changes. We briefly discussed this at lunch about adding a special exceptions permit for a reception facility indoors in the C C zone. Right now you can have a reception facility, but you have to be zoned, uh, C R. I mean, I guess about two months ago, three months ago, we had a zoning case in front of us in Brainerd Road. And we, as a result of that, we've come to find out, we probably need to create a special exceptions permit for indoor facilities only. So we're adding a definition of what that is for like wedding venues that are located indoors and adding that as a special exceptions permit in the C C zone. Again, the only way you can do that now is in the C R zone, but it's, it could be indoors and outdoors, so that's one change. I think that's, um, uh, Councilwoman Burge is familiar with this amendment. Uh, the next issue that we discovered, um, drive-through facilities, we don't have, uh, in our zoning code, uh, a use for standalone drive-through facilities like a Scooter's Coffee. Uh, if you want to do drive-throughs, you have to be associated with a standal, uh, existing use like a Wendy's, Chick-fil-A, that's the only way you can do a standalone drive-through. We don't have, uh, standalone drive-throughs, so we're adding this as a, um, as a definition. We're adding also as a permitted use in the C R, I L and I M U zones and a special exceptions permit in the C C zone. And with that comes six standards or review criteria, these are the same existing review criteria as we have for existing drive-throughs. It's no change, no new policies, this is exactly the same, the only difference is we're adding a new definition for standalone drive-through, which is like a Scooter's. The one we, one case we had, um, I guess last two, three months ago, they're adding indoor seating as part of that. Well, probably, most of those are existing to the old zones, C twos. So going today, like if you wanted to do Dunkin' Donuts on Broad Street, you could not do that Dunkin' Donuts today. Well, except if it's, oh, well. You could. But no, so we're adding this as, to that. Uh, the second thing is the A D U's, cleanup language in the A D U's, the areas in red is what's being added. We're, uh, gross square footage, we're simply referencing where you, how you calculate gross square footage, uh, to section thirty-eight ten, existing zoning code. Uh, those are the things that are being added. And if you notice in the, in the yellowish-orange, it says air-conditioned, that's supposed to be A R E. So that's a change, that's simply a clerical error. Um, next one, this is probably maybe Karen can talk to better now, we're actually adding inform-based code for multi-unit living, five or more units in a single structure. Uh, there's no parking requirements, there's zero parking spaces, uh, for units less than eight hundred square feet. Uh, for units more than eight hundred square foot, that's one space, one parking space required. Uh, I think we're going to have some discussion about this, that's why the map is shown, Emily did a map, uh, to show existing zones where it allows multi-unit, five or more. And should we do some additional, uh, parking, um, requirements for multi-unit developments? Have any questions on that, that's the, that's the staff-initiated changes, I'll be glad to answer anything.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Brian, that was a concise and explanatory, uh, report, I, I got it, but I just have a, a clarification question about this last section.
Of the, the parking?
Yeah, I want to make sure that we're not just doing this for five or more units in a single structure, but also five or more units on a single property. It would apply to both of these, would it not, because the way the slide is worded is not what we discussed in our last meeting about this.
It's intended to be the multi-unit development. Um, and so if we need to, um, confirm that in this, the section we, we can, yes, it's intended to be, um, for the multi-unit living development to allow more, encourage smaller units. And so, um, we can double-check the language and correct that if needed in the, um, in the resolution, planning commission resolution.
Yeah, because I got Commissioner Anderson, in the resolution, he just said single structure, so we need to change, if that is the direction, we need to change that.
Okay, um, I will hope that there's discussion on this motion, if anybody has anything they want to discuss, but just to get this on the floor the right way. Um, I move approval of these changes with an amendment that this applies to single structures as well as multi-unit living of multiple structures on the same property, which is what we've been talking about these last few months.
And I think that's what we talked about at the last meeting and just using the language from the ordinance.
Well, this is inform-based code, so no.
Yeah.
Those were over eight hundred square feet too.
And so this is just a reminder from the map, most of the core of downtown does not require any parking, any required minimum parking. And so the map is showing those areas where the, this could apply. And so the, we are trying to encourage smaller units just to add a diversity of housing type. And elsewhere in the city, if you have an eight hundred square foot A D U, you're not required to provide additional parking for that A D U. And so, um, this is just one tool to just encourage, I guess, you know, um, additional housing and, and additional smaller units. And so, um, one of the things we can do is track that and report back to Planning Commission and City Council in six months about how this tool is being used, if at all. Um, we know that the market will kick in and that might drive parking more than any minimum parking standard in the zoning ordinance.
So we have a motion and an amendment and it has been seconded, right? Yep. Okay, I, I had one thing.
I just got a quick question, so let me know.
Go ahead.
Would this apply for, like a triplex or a quadplex or anything like that?
It does not.
It would, it's just for five units or more.
And when we talked about it, A D U's, um, are, are a thing for, I think it's three and four units. And then it's when it's five plus, it doesn't, it just becomes a unit. And so that's why A D U's already taken care of in the form-based code based on the language used at that time. And that's kind of what we talked about last, last month and I don't have that handout.
I, I guess, I'm asking because I think this is great and I think this will provide a lot of flexibility, but at the same time, I think multi-unit living is, is where you start getting into a lot more, bank financing and, and, you know, financial partners requiring parking. And it's great that we're removing the regulatory hurdle there, but I think the section of the market that could really use something like this is actually one step below in that kind of triplex, quadplex, that's where you're getting kind of more developer financed, donor financed, smaller projects, they're not having to deal with the banks. They're more likely to take advantage of something that says, okay, I don't have to do parking for my, my small unit. And some of that can be covered by that A D U. But I just wanted to throw that, that out there, I don't want to derail this because this is good.
Yes, we know that there, we still need to look at other parking options, this is the one that just, um, yeah, seemed, um, that was the first one we tackled, so yes, thank you, we can add that in.
Yeah, the form, form-based code for multi-unit, three or more units in a single structure, that's still staying at one space, we're not changing that till we come back later on.
Just in an effort to simplify, um, everybody's life, at some point in the future, I don't understand why we're creating a new definition for how to measure square footage in units that are eight hundred square feet or A D U's when the I R C already does that, like creates, uh, a mechanism for how units are measured. So I, I think it's odd and, you know, not necessary for us to create a new measurement system when it already exists in our building code. So I'm wondering where this came from and why we couldn't just reference the I R C.
Do you know, Emily, Emily can answer, she's one.
This was at the requests from the Land Development Office, they were having a few, um, situations with A D U building permits where the design included a, um, covered porch or like an entryway over the door. But then was still had a slab or ground of some form of the house underneath. And so they wanted clarification because in theory, the person could then wall in all sides of that. It increased the square footage to more than eight hundred square feet after the permit got approved. And it's just referencing back to the rules of measurement, which is already describes that. It's, they just wanted it specifically in the A D U section, sort of as I guess another reference to site to help them with permitting and enforcement.
That language is ardent, um, this is A D U's outside of the form-based code. And so when the A D U ordinance was developed, that measurement, how it was measured was part of that, um, original ordinance. And this is just confirming how that measurement should be done.
Well, I for one am opposed and, uh, I, I'm not going to make a motion in, in regards to the motion that's already been made, but I'm, I'm opposed to creating a new measurement standard when that standard already exists. And the reason, um, just to me seems, I don't know what the right word is, but unnecessary to create a different standard for how units are measured when they're eight hundred square feet or an A D U. When, when we already, we already do have a standard for how square footage is calculated, that's widely known. And this is going to be buried in an A D U code somewhere and some architect is not going to be aware of it. And, and it just, uh, we, we've done this, uh, I mean, as a city, L D O, R P A, where they create rules and rules and rules. And you have fire codes that aren't consistent with zoning codes and subdivision regulations. And this is just one small opportunity for us to create, uh, or for us to stop the city from creating duplicity of codes that contradict each other, which makes it very confusing. So I, I would just adamantly be opposed to this particular amendment.
Mr. Chair, I don't think there is a pressing need to get this done if that is something that, you know, if Planning Commission wanted to remove that, not have it move forward to City Council, I think that'd be fine and then we could revisit it.
Chairman, I'd like to move my, move to amend my motion with Commissioner Maybe's support to strike this section from the changes for this month.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion on the floor? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And then we have a resolution, uh, second resolution here, Mr. Schultz?
I'll, I'll turn this over to, uh, Commissioner Anderson, I think he has, this is, this is a requested change that we, uh, again, we have staff initiated, this is a requested change outside of staff, so that if Mr. Anderson wants to speak to this.
Do you have a slide of the text?
Sure, let me get to it.
Alright, so this is a pretty simple change and this one slide is all we need. Uh, this is a request from the professional stakeholder community, um, to expand the, the different professional criteria for a landscape plan and who can prepare one. We are concerned that backlog that has, that has had by several L A's in town, uh, will slow down the pipeline of housing that we so desperately need and, and what Commissioner Payne correctly called a crisis earlier in the meeting. Uh, so that's it, developments will move faster if we're a little more, uh, agreeable to who can prepare a landscape plan.
Yeah, the building, Mr. Anderson, the area and rate, the language in red, it's what's being added, everything else in blacks is currently in the current code.
We have a motion to approve and it has been properly seconded, any discussion? The, the only opposition I can imagine would be the landscape architect. Where are they? Okay. Are you opposed? You don't agree with it? Do you want to voice your opposition, because I haven't asked for any opposition yet, we do have a motion on the floor and it has been seconded.
Brad Brackett with Reagan Smith. So I'm a landscape architect of twenty-five-plus years, I'm licensed in Georgia, Tennessee and Florida. What you're changing is something that's common in all other municipalities, most plans have to be done by a landscape architect. Pretty simple. We, we have, we go to school for five years, get degrees and we're, we know how to do site development plans, tree removal plans, proposed landscape plans, hardscape plans, and that's what we specialize in. And I think that you're going to muddy the waters and lessen the quality of work that's going to come before you if you make this change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Another person.
I would disagree, just in the fact that the market, if, if I muddy the water, I won't sell my product. And I think, to me, I don't even, you know, I, I, I much prefer to do my own landscape plan when I do my developments and I, I sink or swim with what they look like. And I'm pretty happy with how they've turned out for the most part.
So Mike Price, M A P Engineers. In practicing engineering for over forty years, I have prepared hundreds, if not a thousand, landscape plans and went right through the system and knew exactly what I was doing. Uh, in terms of getting the approvals and meeting the, uh, requirements as it relates to Land Development Office, including in the county as well, where we have to do landscape plans. Many other engineers are competent, the state of Tennessee, what they tell us is, if you feel competent in this area, you are licensed to practice. So if I feel competent to call out the type of trees, shrubs, whatever else, and I'm willing to stamp it, then I take that risk and I say I'm competent. If the state board wants to challenge it, or someone wants to challenge my competency, they have that ability to do so. But again, it's not watering down in terms of what the requirements are, the city standards will be the city standards, everything will continue to be met. It just simply allows, uh, those of us that have the competency in those areas to, uh, practice. That's what we've been doing for years until this came into effect just a, a while back. So, uh, with that, that's, that would be my point, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you for both of the professionals who, who spoke today, I appreciate that, I, I will echo that, uh, this has, the, the idea that only a landscape architect can do these plans is relatively new to Chattanooga City Code, it's only been in there for one year. Uh, so prior to that, that was not the requirement.
All in favor indicate by saying, Mr. Maybe?
I'm sorry, I, I know we want to keep moving, I, I just want to thank the city for, uh, for, for bringing on this, this proposal here. I think anything that we can do to help keep these projects moving along will help keep housing costs down is, you know, every little bit makes a difference, so thank, thank you to the city for doing that.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Does staff have any updates for us?
No updates.
Okay, do we have public comment on any non-agenda items? Thank you. Can I get approval to Planning Commission minutes of October thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five? We have a motion to approve our minutes and it has been properly seconded, any discussion? Don't leave yet. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Uh, I, I do have something that I just wanted to talk about briefly and that is that, um, like, like Mr. Payne and, and, and a lot of other builders and developers, we get from our sales team, I'm, I'm sure, a lot of data as it relates to housing. And, um, you know, I feel like, um, on account of the fact that on any given day, Mr. Payne or myself or Mr. Maybe or a handful of other developments in our county are taking millions and millions and millions of dollars worth of risk as it relates to the developments that they're building and, um, they're, they're not doing that blindly. Um, Mr. Payne doesn't make a decision or any other developer that comes before us make a decision to do a development, just blind, blind, just from a gut feeling. They don't wake up one morning and decide, hey, we think something needs to be done here. As, as I look at that data, um, it occurs to me that Planning Commission as a whole is not getting that same data. And certainly, um, it's, it's not something that's oftentimes discussed and myself or Mr. Payne doesn't. discussed, and myself or Mr. Payne doesn't come up here and just rattle off a bunch of data in regards to the median home price, or the affordability index, or the number of days on market, or the average income of buyers, and there's just so much data. And what we know is that RPA has the ability to produce a lot of that data, right? And so I'm wondering what you guys could start to provide in our packets, or as a part of a staff update. I know at one point in time, included in the packet that we would get would be the number of lots that had, had been platted, and I don't, it's been so long since we saw that. But we'll have opposition get up here and say, there's 750 lots that have been approved on this street. Well, I don't know that. I mean, that's just them saying it. So I'm, I guess I just wanted to have some conversation about what it might look like for staff to start figuring, figuring out how to present that data at planning commission meetings.
We could get, discuss some possibilities next month and see if that does. We used to say, like, on the agenda, if approved, that there would be X number of lots under subdivision, and X number of lots, and X number of potential homes under zoning. And that was just in a get of an idea of the activity, kind of the, that was coming out of planning commission. And we could start with that, and then see from there.
I know that y'all also have all sorts of data at your fingertips.
We do.
That, that a lot of people don't know how to use Hamilton County GIS, but I mean, it, it'll tell, it could help inform planning commission maybe better.
On our website, we really have a really good dashboard that our information research department keeps up with. You can search by council district, commission district, building permits, subdivision plaits, lots recorded. It's really good. They do a really good job keeping it up to date. We can probably use something that I have to bring.
We, that's been one of the continuing ads sections, but maybe we can do development services and then the, excuse me, the development dashboards. And then Eun and her team are always working on some sort of new dashboard or source of information, so we can ask maybe as, if we don't have a ton of cases next month, kind of a staff update, and then we can start adding in the number of lots created in subdivision and the number of units proposed as part of action.
Do you have the kind of data that you would need to calculate that housing affordability index?
I don't know. We used to have a developer who would share some of their information with us over time, and you and I think found that helpful, just is to double-check some of our numbers. So I think the answer is I don't know, but we can check.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had. Mr. Payne?
Thank you. I think one time I called, called on you, and you started commenting.